Good afternoon. It's Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. This is a school board workshop and the time is 12 o'clock PM. There are five items on the agenda. First will be RSM presentation. It'll be followed by the middle school proximity plan, part two. Then the ESOL department update is number three. Number four is the guest teacher services proposal. And number five is the agenda review for the November 7th, 2023 regular agenda. We'll begin with RSM. Thank you for joining us. Dr. Munir, would you like to introduce the team?
Be happy to, sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity as RSM moves towards their area to provide the presentation regarding their work over the past year. I want to just extend my gratitude right from the very beginning to this group and organization for their hard work and effort. Not only do they work directly on behalf of the board, they work very well with your current audit committee, and they have been essential in a new superintendent's ability to understand not only their findings, but management responses and how we could go about together ensuring that our responses to their audit and their recommendations would be the correct pathways to move forward. Dr. Desamore is not with us yet. Dr. Desamore has been the primary cabinet member responsible for working with RSM to our responses. But before we get to those, I just wanted to thank this team in particular for their hard work and their professionalism. And I will tell you that no matter when I reached out to them, either by text, including yesterday during Halloween candy time, Ava was really good about responding right away because we wanted to talk about a couple of things. So seated at the podium is Matt Blondell. He's the RSM director. Weiss Campbell is the RSM manager. Ava Dorasami is the RSM supervisor and Carla Ewing is the RSM senior director. So we appreciate your presence here today. Look forward to your presentation to the board.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us here today. We are very excited to present these three internal audit reports that were completed over the past year and presented to the audit committee and discussed in their meeting on September 21st, just a few weeks ago. You may recall that just after the board approved the audit plan for this year, the district was unfortunately hit by the hurricane Ian, and we did have some delays. But as a superintendent said, you know, the collaboration of the superintendent and his staff was instrumental into helping us complete these projects as quickly as we could. And despite many of the other things that they had going on here at the district, and were very helpful and, like you said, collaborative in discussing the observations that we have in these reports and developing their action plans in response to the observations and recommendations that we had. I would like to point out before I hand over the microphone to Ava that as we go through these reports, from our perspective as internal auditors for many school districts in Florida, the observations that we've identified here are certainly opportunities for improvement for the district to increase a control environment, either through a design or through effective completion of internal controls. But these are by no means out of the ordinary in terms of observations that we've seen at other school districts and other public sector entities that we work with throughout the state. So I would like just to state that upfront, and we do appreciate the collaboration that management and the superintendent had in developing their action plans, which we do feel like are appropriate to address the observations and the recommendations that we have. So we will go through our three reports with you today. The report of the purchasing card function, the report of the half cent sales surtax, and contract administration and compliance. So I'll turn it over to Ava and she will begin with our purchasing card report.
Perfect. Okay. So as Matt mentioned, we're going to start with P cards. Our objective here was really to assess the design and effectiveness of the P card internal controls, to assess compliance with district policy and statute, and to assess the procedures related to P card governance and use, and to identify any unusual P card transactions through data analytics. So we looked at 54 transactions and assessed the supporting documentation of those transactions. We looked at allowability, the approval at both individual approval level for each expenditure and also at a monthly reconciliation level. We looked at 100% of the transactions that exceeded the transaction limit within our audit period. And we also evaluated segregation of duties, processes related to cardholder transfer and termination, and performed data analytics, again, on that larger population of transactions. So I'll start with the observations themselves. Observation one, this is a two-parter. We did find that the documentation that defines the roles and responsibilities in managing P cards, so the P cardholder, a reconciler, and approver, that documentation is inconsistently completed. We also saw that segregation of duties within the truist banking platform where our P card data is stored and our transactions are ultimately made. If a cardholder is also given the approver role, so when two roles are given, which was the case for five of our 30 samples, the user can hypothetically make a purchase, approve their own transaction, and review that transaction at the end of the month without a secondary layer of approval. Observation two is really closely related, so I'll jump into that one before I circle back to the management action plans for both. Observation two was that the truist system itself was not able to provide a listing of users that fall in that category I mentioned earlier, where a cardholder is also an approver. So right now, you're not able to have an audit trail depicting which transactions might have been problematic. So our recommendations for both observation one and two is really centered around enforcing expectations to how we document role assignment, fully segregating the cardholder, approver, and reconciler roles, and also to work with truist to see what type of documentation and enhanced reporting that we can get from the provider. So in response to both of these observations, the district has agreed to collaborate with truist to see what options might be already available, and they have reached out already in July. They have also stated that as of July 10th, all documentation related to the assignments of P cards will be reviewed by procurement. And if there are any issues found in that documentation, that P card access will be blocked until it's resolved. The district also plans to add another tier to the current approval process so that those duties that I mentioned earlier are fully segregated, and they plan to have all of those remediation actions completed by the end of this month, November. Observation three is related to the documentation itself of those P card transactions. So the P card program, policy, and procedure guide, kind of a mouthful, but that is the governing document that the district has developed to govern the use and limitations of P card usage. It does require that purchases related to travel and purchases above the transaction limit must have certain documentation requirements. We found that not all of the documentation was collected in two different scenarios. Two instances related to travel did not have the appropriate level of detail, and purchases that were made above that transaction limit did not have complete documentation. I will note that while the documentation was provided to us eventually, it was not provided originally, which really prevents that adequate review process of occurring. We also saw that the current SOP does, in some instances, allow for split transactions. When I say split transactions, that's a transaction made by the same cardholder on the same day with the same vendor that separately do not exceed that transaction limit, but together they do. And so we recommend that all instances of split transactions is actually prohibited in a revised policy. So as I mentioned, a revised policy is our recommendation and reinforcing those current expectations, and any cardholder who frequently submits unsupported transactions have some type of predefined disciplinary action invoked. So in response, management has stated that through formal training and an annual quiz, which I'll get to in a later observation, they plan to kind of reinforce those expectations in updating the guidance related to travel-related purchases and plan to have all of that implemented again this month. Observation four, this is related to the timeliness of P card removal. We did find that on average, 27 to 50 days may elapse between when an employee is terminated or transferred and when their card is deactivated. I do want to note that of our sampled cardholders, we did not find any instances where a card was not deactivated timely and subsequent transactions were made. So I do want to make sure that's clear. I also want to note that the district already performs an annual review of P cards to identify if there are any that need to be deactivated. The piece that's missing here, which is our recommendation, is to implement a weekly report from HR to better identify faster which cards may need to be deactivated. And the district has agreed and is already working on implementing that process as of July, and they plan to implement the rest of the remediation at the end of August. So if there are any updates from management, I'll pause at the end. Observation five, this is related to P card training. So I mentioned earlier, a P card quiz is actually an excellent tool that the district has implemented to train P cardholders on expectations and limitations and the rights of their P card. It's a great tool, but we did find that not all P cardholders are taking that quiz. And there are some P cardholders that do take the quiz, receive a pretty low score, and then do not retake that quiz. We also found that some of those P card procedures that are in place could be enhanced. It does contain some great information, but it could use some strengthening related to training, those quiz scores, discipline, and the expectation for documentation related to certain IT purchases. So a couple areas where that could be enhanced. Management action plan does state that beginning in fiscal year 2024, the procurement department will require that P card quiz to have been completed for all cardholders and to get a passing score of 80%. Anyone who fails to complete that passing score and fails to take that quiz to begin with will have their P card access removed. Management also stated that, again, they will update that P card manual to include some detail related to training and enforcement and details related to those IT purchases I mentioned earlier. The estimated completion date for that observation was actually yesterday, October 31st. Observation six, and the final observation for P cards, is related to P card issuance and thresholds. So we did identify that overall, our transaction limits here are higher than other districts at both the individual purchase level and at the monthly purchase level. We also found that of the 504 active P cards, 27% of them make very infrequent purchases. Of course, our recommendation is always to lower our lines of credit and reduce our lines of credit whenever possible. So the district has agreed to perform an analysis of expenditures by cardholder and by limit to determine if a newer threshold could be reached or if we need to reduce the number of cards if necessary, and they plan to have that analysis completed by January. Okay. Got a lot of content to go through, so I'll go right into our second report before I pause. Any questions on P cards? Sounds good. Okay. Half cent sales surtax. So during this engagement, we interviewed representatives from finance, budget, and procurement. We also issued a questionnaire to the independent sales surtax oversight committee, which I'll, moving forward, will refer to as ISOC. We also reviewed 100% of the collections of half-cent funds from January 2019 through December 2022, performing a four-way reconciliation between the district's GL, bank statements, the online change-for-change report, and information and materials that is created for the ISOC. We also performed detailed testing on a sample of expenditures to assess the invoice review process, the timeliness of invoice payment, the allowability based off of the half-cent referendum parameters, the appropriateness of approvals, and the accuracy of reporting. We also looked at a sample of competitive procurements that utilize half-cent funds to assess compliance with statute and board policy, and we assessed the fulfillment of any pre-election commitments that were made before the referendum was voted on in 2018. So after all of that, we do have five observations. Observation one is related to ISOC compliance. We did find that the updates made from the ISOC committee to the board were not happening as stipulated in Board Policy 1.26. Overall, there were nine updates that did not occur. We did know, of course, that the pandemic in 2020 and 2021 may have impacted that. But we also noted that the content of two of the board updates that did occur were missing the ISOC's opinion related to the district's use of expenditure and surtax proceeds. So the district has agreed with the observation and has revised the current board policy, which states that four of the board updates, or one of the four board updates will be done by an ISOC member, and then the remaining three will be done through a written report through district staff. And they agreed that these updates moving forward, starting actually last month in October, will have those requirements as stipulated in the current policy. Observation two is related to different committee. Now we're talking about the capital committee. This observation is related to, again, that capital committee who is responsible for approving half-cent projects and also guiding the overall capital projects plan. So not just decisions related to half-cent, but district-wide decisions. We did find that there is currently no charter that defines the membership and representation goals, expectations, and responsibilities of that committee, and that the decisions made by the committee, including whatever data may be used to reach those decisions, is not currently documented. We did want to note that there is a lot of great representation on the committee. We've got finance, budget, procurement, construction, safety and security, IT, legal, and academic services regularly attending those meetings. But our recommendation here is to formally define what the expectations are and who needs to be there, and then start documenting those decisions so we have a good look-back review. Based on management's action plan, the district has agreed to the items I just mentioned, and their goal was to have those items completed by September 30th. Observation three, as I mentioned earlier, we performed that four-way reconciliation for both collections and expenditure data. This included looking at the data reported on that online change-for-change report. We did find a variance in the reported expenditures for years two, three, four, and five. After we dug a little bit deeper, we did see that that variance was due to a coding error. So the system right now is set up to automatically capture expenditure data from the ERP system. But because of that coding error, we were missing some of the half-cent projects, so the variance was getting larger and larger as we had more expenditures over time. After we brought this up with management, finance and IT worked to fix that coding error. We went back and verified that that variance has now been resolved. We are recommending, though, that they implement a periodic review and reconciliation themselves of all of that data, which they have agreed, and a member of the budget staff will now be doing that on a quarterly basis. Observation four. So earlier, we talked about how projects as a whole are given the green light through the capital committee. This observation is related to individual expenditures and the review and approval of those. We did note that the district does have a specific approval workflow for half-cent-related expenditures, but if a particular expenditure is changed or recoded, so we're using a different funding line, for example, that approval workflow is not re-triggered. So through our testing, we did see a fairly large IT expenditure was missing the approval from the CIO because that approval was not re-triggered in the system. When we brought this up with management, along with our recommendation, they did agree to revise that workflow, and they plan to have that workflow put in place actually today, November 1st. Observation five, and the final four, half-cent. This is related to vendor insurance documentation. So as I mentioned earlier, we did take a sample of solicitations that were used to procure vendors for half-cent projects. We looked at those procurement packages and did find that, according to the district's procurement checklist, vendors were required to submit two different types of insurance documentation, one of which was evidence that the insurance has been rated by a third party appropriately. However, for five of the 31 awarded vendors, we did see that that second component, that rating evidence, was not included in their response. When we brought this up with management, they, in their management action plan, let us know that the checklist that was utilized in that procurement was actually the incorrect checklist. They've since revised that to incorporate the correct language that stipulates what types of insurance documentation is required for what types of procurements. So the remediation for that observation per management has been completed. I know we talked about doing questions at the end, but I'll pause here just in case. Any immediate questions? Okay. Just wanted to double-check. Okay. Third and final report that we will run through today is contract compliance. So this report has four total observations. What we did as part of this engagement was look at how contracts are executed and how the district is administering contracts, meaning anything that the district is doing to maintain compliance with responsibilities stipulated in the contracts, how we are monitoring vendor performance, and how invoices are reviewed in accordance with that contract to make sure vendors are performing, and the district is fulfilling any responsibilities that is stated in the contract. So as part of this process, we did meet with personnel from procurement, insurance and benefits management, professional standards, legal services, and a number of end-user schools and departments who are responsible for administering these contracts as part of their day-to-day. We also sampled a number of executed agreements to assess that contract documentation. In insurance, we looked at 20 different invoices and assessed their supporting documentation for mathematical accuracy and to see if the district is regularly confirming that the vendor is providing the goods or services that they are required to before greenlighting an invoice for payment. Also looked at vendor performance monitoring, and for a subset of 10 contracts, we did do a deeper dive into those insurance coverages and vendor evaluations. So after all of that, I'll get into observation number one, which is broken into four different areas. I'll try to be as concise and clear as possible. But first area of observation one is related to limited contract visibility. So we did find that there is no defined document retention process in place for centrally retaining all contracts, including any subsequent amendments. So schools and departments are permitted to execute contracts below that competitive bidding threshold of $50,000 independently, without any oversight or monitoring necessarily from the Office of Legal Services. So this means that the district right now is currently unable to get a holistic view of all of its contractual obligations in total. I do want to make note here that I am referring specifically to contracts below $50,000. Contracts above $50,000, we found, have a very clear and very documented process in place. So observation one is only referring to those under that threshold. The second component of observation one is related to inconsistent contract execution processes. So while talking with end-user schools and departments, we did find an inconsistent understanding regarding when a contract needs to be sent to legal services, when it may need to be sent to professional standards, and what documents need to be obtained from the vendor prior to contract execution. The third component here is related to contract oversight. So this is related to inconsistencies and how total contract spend is monitored. So we did find that the teams are regularly monitoring spend at the PO level, but very often, there are multiple POs associated with one contract. And for the contracts below $50,000, it's unclear who is kind of keep in charge of that total spend. The last part of observation one, this is a lengthier one, but it's related to standardization and risk management. So as I mentioned earlier, we looked at the insurance coverages and documentation related to our sampled contracts, and we found that, according to insurance and benefits management, a certificate of insurance is required to be obtained from all contracted vendors. What we found, though, was that the contract language itself does not always require that COI. In the instances where that COI is required, we have some vendors who may not submit that COI, and then we have other vendors who do, but an updated COI is not always obtained from year to year to make sure we still have that continued coverage. We also found some issues related to the coverages within those COIs compared to what is required per the contract. We noted that this might be due to a lack of understanding related to who is responsible for obtaining, reviewing, and then requesting renewed COIs. So all of those four categories, to say, for observation one, it's really related to the decentralized contracting environment, which has led to those inconsistencies that I just walked through. So our recommendation here was to consider implementing a contract management software. This will define the execution procedures, hopefully in an automatic workflow, centralize all of our document retention into one area, and then also track expiration dates and other key data points. But that, of course, is a big undertaking. So in the more immediate future, we have recommended that we work to clearly define the expectations for those contracts below $50,000, just as we have above $50,000. The district has agreed with that recommendation. They plan to have an analysis, an evaluation, a cost-benefit analysis of potential options for contract management software completed by the end of this year. And then in the more immediate future recommendation, they hope to have done, I believe, in February. Observation two, here, we found that the district is frequently utilizing POs in lieu of formal signed contract agreements. This is a common practice and not necessarily one that's inappropriate. Our recommendation here is just to define when we are okay with utilizing a PO and when we would require a more formal contract template. I do want to note that the district's PO template does contain some key contract provisions, so it's not, we're not implying that using a PO is leaving us completely unprotected, but perhaps for agreements that are longer term or a more complex contractual arrangement for customizing or prepaying, just really defining what instances we would like to see a more formal contract template. Management's action plan is in agreement with that recommendation, and they plan to implement a new process and expectations again by February. implement a new process and expectations again by February. Observation three. This is related to vendor performance monitoring and evaluation. So we did find that currently, a district-wide process for monitoring and evaluating our vendors does not exist. The level of effort required to monitor a vendor certainly depends on what type of work that vendor is performing, so we're not recommending that we spend a ton of resources in evaluating a vendor if the long-term data we get from that is not going to be helpful for decision-making. But we are recommending that we implement some type of vendor performance evaluation process in defining which instances we would like to evaluate our vendors. The district has agreed to that recommendation and plans to have that program in place by June 2024. Lastly, at the end of all of these observations, observation four is related to invoice review procedures. So we found that of our sampled invoices, two of those were paid a little bit later than we would have expected, according to the Florida Prompt Payment Act, and then two others had issues related to how they were marked received within the ERP system, which is essentially that green light triggering it's okay for payment. We recommend here that the district enhance those procedures and training documents to include some step-by-step guidance for our school and department bookkeepers relating to those invoice review expectations. I do want to note here that we did not find any instances where an invoice was paid without confirmation that the vendor fulfilled their obligations. That's frequently something we've seen other districts have struggled with, so I want to give credit where credit is due. We did not see that occurring. The district has agreed to enhance those procedures and training related to that invoice review by the end of the calendar year. That is the end of our three reports, so I will open it up to questions now.
Dr. Bernier, would you like to say anything first or before we open up the questions?
Just that I believe that the auditing process is extremely important to every school district and every organization. It's an opportunity to see where certain strengths lie, and those always get reported, so I thank Ava for that wonderful comment about some of the things we are doing correctly as she moves through this process. But these are areas that will strengthen our ability to continue to build public trust and transparency by doing this publicly with all of you and then handling the management questions, and then meeting the deadlines that we've outlined in order to respond back to RSM. And then RSM has another, you know, great opportunity to come back in and check to make sure that we've done what we said we will have done. So we look forward to making sure that we meet these deadlines from our expectations, continue to communicate with RSM, and continue to improve the processes and procedures of our school district. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
You want to start with me?
Yeah, I'll start down there.
So first of all, thank you, Ava, for moving through that as quickly as you did. My goodness, you must have spent some time in New York. Just very, very, very grateful for the work on the P-cards because I've been concerned about that for a long time. And as I listen to you, I think as you go through some of the other processes, not the ISOC, but the other contracts and purchase orders, I just think we've grown so fast as an organization that we've lost track of some of the lower-level administrative processes and, you know, in a rush to get things done. So I'm really, really grateful for the work you've done here, and your reports were fantastic. I loved the detail. I loved the deadlines. So bringing up the deadlines, I know they're coming back to survey the results of our efforts to comply, but I think what I would like to see is that as we've hit some of these deadlines, that Dr. Bernier simply gives the board in, you know, in the board update, whatever, an indication that the targets for October, the targets for November, were met with respect to the RSM audits. I would like an update from the board attorney with respect to policy revisions, and I would like some sort of comment from the superintendent to the effect that process documents, I mean, even if we've changed the processes, that process documents have been reviewed and are in place. So I think you guys targeted the right areas when you set out, you know, we all set out the goals, and it's great work, and I really appreciate what you've done here. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Okay. Questions? Yes.
I have one answer already for you, Ms. Morgan. Policy 6424 is going to go to a pre-brief next Tuesday, and that is the purchasing card, so we've taken some of the recommendations and have already implemented in the policy.
64?
24.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Fisher?
I have a few, thank you, Chair, and some of these may be comments towards administration as well. So I'm going to start with P-card. For the self-approved transactions, do we know what levels in the hierarchy those are at? Not specific positions, per se, but within our organization, or did it vary?
Because the TRUist system is not able to provide an audit trail of what transactions that may have occurred, it's hard to tell. If, one, it is just a possibility and it didn't occur, or, two, it did occur and at what levels. So I think once we, all right, once the district is able to work with TRUIST to see what types of audit trails are available, then we'll have better insight into that question.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there's a pattern or anything to it or if we just kind of ran them around. Next one is, I see we're better than we were before on transfers. I guess it was 565 days on average, but I'm still in this probably administration comment. I mean, I'm still disappointed we're at 27 days on those transactions from when people leave the positions within the district to having that gone. I mean, that should be an immediate one, so.
One of the best things we can do, and you understand we're in the middle of a PeopleSoft upgrade, that's one of the issues of why we think it's so important to upgrade our PeopleSoft unit. In the meantime, while HR is still providing termination reports, our chief technical officer, our chief information officer, Dwayne Alton, has found a way to provide information more quickly and to provide that information to the necessary departments so that they can make the terminations on those cards within a more reasonable timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. I just, as I saw those numbers, that was, as I said, it's better, but that still concerns me. Let me move on to half-cent. And if I'm going too long, Chair, make sure to cut me off on that or anyone else, please. Half-cent, do you guys deal with any other school districts that have a half-cent sales tax?
Yes, we do.
Yes, and, you know, from your recollection, I mean, are some of the issues that are documented here similar to what you've seen in your other district or other districts?
I would say so. You know, most districts that have a half-cent also have a committee that reports to the board. The level of involvement of that committee, what they specifically do varies by district and kind of the board's direction, but certainly, you know, many times we do see, and not even specific to half-cent, but other committees may not have a charter or may, you know, if there's groups that are meeting, like in some of our observations that we had for the capital committee, they may not have like a specific defined purpose, and of course, if they're meeting and they're making decisions, that's always going to be a recommendation from us. But no, I would say nothing out of the ordinary here, mostly just kind of, you know, fine points on compliance with policy.
Okay, because this one, this was the one that was most bothersome for me, just looking at some of the issues. I mean, this, when half-cent sales tax passed, there's obviously a lot of scrutiny, and there's, feel like there should have been extra scrutiny on things. I mean, missing documentation, coding error going back to year two, that was troublesome. And I get people make mistakes at, but I feel we should be up on that one. I will skip on to the next, contracts. How many other districts in regards to the contract management software, is that pretty standard throughout the districts you represent, or does it just depend on size?
Depends on size and budgetary availability.
So I'm guessing it skews more towards larger districts?
Larger districts, yes.
Okay.
And some use a quasi approach, too, like Vendor Link is an area that some utilize from that perspective, but they still have manual processes as well. So we see strictly manual processes, we see quasi, and then we do see contract management systems as well.
Okay. I have two other kind of general questions, and are we being good partners? Are we getting the information you need? Are we following up on time? Are we doing what needs to be done?
Absolutely, absolutely. The function has definitely evolved these past few years in going through this round, and given that we had to do the three at the same time, just given the delay that we had because of the hurricane and what the district was going through, management was very collaborative with us and helpful with us in trying to get these to the finish line.
Okay. Okay. And last overall question, this is probably for everyone, how do we ensure better compliance? So as I said, you know, some of these are, as I said, fairly, some are routine, but some are bothersome in here, and how do we make sure that we don't go, as I said, like going back on the sales tax, going back to a year-two coding error from 2019, how do we make sure that we're doing better on this?
Well, I think it's the evolution of the process and the function as well. So the district is going through, what is this, year two or three, of having the internal audit function and having the internal auditors out there. So you'll start to see just an evolution in the mindset when it comes to control and the control environment and the tone at the top. So the district has been very forthcoming in increasing their transparency, increasing their, how they support internal audit and support defined control areas and improvement to control areas.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment. Thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it. I thank you to everyone in the district that, you know, helped work on this and respond, so thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. As is frequently the case, we share a brain. You asked a lot of the questions I had, but I do have two more. To Ms. Morgan's point, so more than just updates as to when things are accomplished, I think this is to Dr. Bernier, a chart showing when these deadlines are upcoming that is frequently updated to show when and if the deadlines have been met or not would be more helpful than just a board update saying this. I'd like to know when the deadlines are upcoming, and, you know, we can take notes today, but if we're all on the same page and we're all getting the same reporting, that would be helpful. And then, so one of the findings indicated a violation of policy, and this is a question not just for the reports that we've received from RSM, but more generally, when a policy is violated, what is the outcome for the employee that violated that? And you don't have to answer that out loud at a public board meeting, but perhaps in a one-on-one, you could brief board members as to how that's handled, and because it is a question that I raised with the board attorney in our last one-on-one for other policy issues where employees had violated policy, I just don't know how that's handled by the superintendent. So a one-on-one might be, I don't know, how you want to deal with that.
Be happy to do that in one-on-ones, but I can speak specifically to it. There's a level of accountability to policy. There's two interesting pieces in the violations of policy here. Some of them revolve around P-card. Specifically, we had a P-cards in a P-card procedural manual before we had a board policy. We just recently passed a board policy over P-cards, which has helped redefine our process as we move forward. So that's difficult to hold people accountable for a policy violation when they don't occur. But when policy violations, it depends upon the amount, the intent, those types of things. Professional standards does handle those investigations for us. They make a recommendation, and it can result everything from, in a sense, a memorandum of understanding, so the person understands what they've done and they know not to do it again, all the way to if there's been other violations or other pieces of conduct that have been questioned in the past, that can lead all the way up to termination. I think the most important thing with P-cards is what I'm hearing historically was people tried to take them away and then they gave them back. I can assure you that if there's P-card violations, P-card is not a right. It is a privilege to use a P-card because it actually allows us a legal way and an auditorial way to audit and track our purchases outside of the purchase order, and in fact, purchase orders actually cost a little bit more to complete because of the amount of people that have to touch one in order for it to be done. So that's why P-cards normally were introduced to school districts for efficiency and some cost savings. But I do appreciate, and it's been interesting to watch our finance department work with our vendor, TRUIST, to upgrade their system so that we can put those checks and balances in place. So that's a long convoluted, but I can speak specifically to that particular violation on a one-on-one.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Chair?
I just have a few questions. Sorry, I just have a few questions. First of all, with the compliance quiz that you were referring to, highly recommend we stay on top of that with all employees that have P-cards, especially in a timely manner. I don't know if, I mean, in my opinion, I wouldn't allow them to use the P-card at all until they pass the quiz. Also, regarding the P-cards, and this is just something that I think the public would want to know, too. I know that when the district warehouse has materials that someone needs and then they are, because I believe there's a limitation on not being able to use the P-card if our warehouse has, I guess, stuff in the stockroom, if you will. How stocked is our stockroom? When I'm looking at, it's on, it's on one of our PowerPoints that weren't provided here, the limitations, examples, and prohibited purchases from any goods that are available to the district warehouse remain in the stockroom. I just wanted to have a discussion on what that actually means for the public, for them to understand. Dr. Bernier?
I understand the question, but I'm not prepared to speak to the level of materials that we have within our stockroom. There are specific purchases, and when you think about P-cards, there, I think it's important that we expand how wide the breadth and use are. They're available to individuals for district travel and other things like that from the central office. They also exist at the school level. They exist in specific departments like maintenance and in transportation. So there's different needs in different places. I think you were talking about some things related to maybe school supplies, those types of things. Those are more heavily stocked within our department, within our warehouse department, paper, things like that. And that P-card purchase usually will occur with a bookkeeper. As you will recall, the board has recently passed additional software, you approved additional software, to take our bookkeepers out of the DOS era of their bookkeeping system into a true, brand-new process. It's been very successfully implemented, and they are continuing to grow into this, and it will provide us some of that additional documentation and tracking for our auditors so that we can ensure that if purchases are made through an Amazon when, in fact, it would be available, we'll be able to track those.
Okay. Thank you for tying that together. And then lastly, when it comes to vendor evaluations, I think it's a great idea, some sort of evaluation form, no matter what kind of contract we're in, whether it be building a large school all the way down to the list of maintenance, where was that list? We had a list on one of the PowerPoints, but anyway, nonetheless, but I think it's important, too, that, I don't know if we have a way, if the district or the superintendent's office has any sort of workflow chart in how we go through the process of connecting to a contractor for their goods and services. I don't know if there's a step-by-step, something that the superintendent's office has, how you follow that. And we can talk about that on a one-on-one for sure, but also, the other question I have is, is there a document or a process on how we score, whether it be a smaller contract or a larger contract, something that we can see for ourselves on how we are scoring or evaluating each vendor? Am I making sense?
You are, and I will answer the question very, very, very clearly. There is not a process map like that in the superintendent's office. There are process maps like that within our procurement division, and like the presentation today on Kelly Subs, like the presentation next week on, whatever we're presenting on next week, it'll come back to me. One of the things I've asked at cabinet level is for procurement to be prepared to come and talk to the board about several different types of procurement processes, including scoring, what it means to be, what it means to be in a bidding process, how we contact bidders, what does a piggyback actually mean? So we are preparing that presentation for the board as well, and I still don't have November 7th, but the next board member question, I will.
Thank you. It's all right.
Okay. Any other questions? Gio Venelli?
First of all, just thank you very much for this because this is wonderful. It's long overdue. We've requested this. The prior board approved and, you know, rehired you guys and brought you back, and like, I just want to say, I'm so grateful because this was necessary information that we needed. We, P-cards have been an issue since the Florida auditors reporting of 2018, and yet the corrections weren't made. I mean, we had even, the prior administration had to go to the joint legislative audit committee to... committee to discuss our, that audit. So this is really important because finally, we're going to have a plan of action to make the changes and corrections that have been long overdue. And I really appreciate the prior board making sure that we had the right people in place to do that. So thank you. And a couple of questions I had regarding the software for the performance evaluation. Do you have a recommendation of what we should use or look at, or did you make those recommendations? That would be one of the questions that I was concerned because it's about accountability. And so now, what are we going to do to make the changes, to correct the, you know, things that have been going on probably for a long time, this is just the way they did business? People don't change unless you have processes in place to make those changes and help guide that and have the information to direct that, direct that, those changes. So do y'all, did y'all make a recommendation regarding any software that would aid us in that? Thank you.
No, we did not. We typically do not recommend specific software because we want to maintain our independence.
Thank you.
So it's going to be up to the district to be able to analyze what their needs are and what's going to best suit them and their functionality.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious. I didn't know how that process would be. I think that's really it. I'm just very, very excited. The report was like excellent because it's some things that prior employees have brought up over the years, constituents have brought up these things that have been raised, and you just validated everything that they've brought up in the past. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I just want to sort of close here and say, I've had a lot of interaction with RSM being the chair, and they're great to work with. So thank you. The real job of the auditor is to find risk. You know, it's, we can have a lot of risks, a lot of things wrong, and nobody, just like the P-cards, that we weren't getting them back in time, but yet nobody was using them. So I just want to say that I like the idea of tightening it up so we don't have to worry about things like that as we go through all the different, you know, areas. And we'll have new areas for y'all to look at this year. And that's very good. So thanks again for the presentation. Mrs. DePai Bruno, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Actually, I was just going to piggyback on what Dr. Bernier said and then what Board Member Langford Fleming said with regards to the P-card and the new policy, since we're discussing that at this time, Mr. Chairman. So one of the things that, we got the new policy in June of 2023, and based on RSM's recommendations and findings, what we have done is to include that in order to receive a P-card, you do need to complete all of the documentation that is required. And to maintain the P-card, every transaction needs to be properly documented. So that is now in the policy. In addition, if there is any failure of that documentation, then there will be a denial of the P-card. We also have in the policy now that there must be training and you must pass the training in order to receive the P-card. And that any noncompliance with the process or the policy, you have to surrender the P-card to the superintendent if requested by the superintendent. And then, of course, when staff is separated from the district, the P-card has to be returned. We already had some discipline language in the policy, but this, I believe, strengthens it based on what RSM's recommendations are.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
So Mr. Prebreno, return immediately, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The policy actually...
I just wanted to make sure that, because I know even in my world, we, if you leave, give me your keys, give me whatever, you're not leaving without it. And I just really want to say thank you very much as well for all of this. It was great.
Jevonelli?
Couple of questions that I just thought of. So when you, when y'all both spoke, I asked something that Mr. Person said. So are we going to have, and this is to the superintendent, are we going to have like more like risk manager, management, risk management? I know that these things in place will help with that and help with quality control, but are we going to have a policy that controls some of this more? Or they seem to be individual instead of collective. Does that make sense?
It does to some extent. It does make sense what you're asking. I think there are a set of policies that are very specific to overall expectations regarding specific types of ways to purchase things, et cetera. I don't necessarily see that being combined in one unless that would be a recommendation from our legal team. I think instead, what we have to think about is that financial opportunities and opportunities to purchase or working with our procurement or purchasing department, it's important that the procedures are all encompassing, all encompassing, all encompassing. And I think we're on our path to that. Recently, you've hired an individual, you've supported my recommendation for an individual to take on the risk management role. We finally, for the first time in our district's history in a long time, have a risk manager. Additionally, you are, I remembered, what, November 7th? November 7th, you're going to be talking about the potential of an internal auditor, an actual employee to all of you as a board, with contractual services available to organizations like RSM or our county clerk, to utilize them to help do that work. There needs to be a significant cross-pollination between a risk manager who should be looking at where departments and specific pieces of the organization have greater risk, and then working with the internal auditor or the internal audit function to ensure that those individuals understand where the highest risks are. And we target those areas specifically, not just for audits, but for information regarding their internal procedures that would help mitigate or prevent that risk. So you've already begun to take actions along the steps that you were just talking about related to, I hate to say tightening up, but just, but creating more of an atmosphere of regulatory-type procedures to ensure that when things like a P-card are utilized, they're utilized correctly, and if they're not, they're quickly caught. And then we make some determinations of whether this is intentional or whether it's not. And if it is intentional, I do love the word immediately surrender the card. And just remember in your definitions, superintendent means superintendent or designee. So I don't know that I'll be running around collecting everybody's P-card, but there will be individuals who will be charged with that task, and they will probably ask me, is this a surrenderable offense? And generally, it is until we determine that it's not. That's the way I would approach it as your superintendent, to remove the card, then investigate if it's intentional, then we never return it. If it is not intentional or there's been an error, then we make sure that person corrects that other error, retakes the training, and potentially reinstate it.
And one more thing, Dr. Bernier. So one of my thoughts were, are we still at risk with some of the present contracts? Because, I mean, they only did a sampling. So how do we know we're fixing some of the things that are, that were broken?
I guess my question is at risk for what?
Not being compliant with some of the contracts that whatever, what RSM found.
There is...
Those things, you know what I mean?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, ma'am. I do believe that when you think about contracts, and again, I want to expand this, remember primarily, and this is important for the public, we have a very good monitoring system in place for those large purposes at $50,000 or more. The district is really set up well for the decisions you make to ensure we're doing that correctly. It is the purchases below $50,000 that become questionable, and that's where it spreads out even further. There are a number of contracts, yearbooks, caps and gowns, class rings, all of those contracts are done at the school level. The bookkeeping software is a first step in compliance with that. But we also need someone to be monitoring, and they nod occasionally, which helps me that I know I'm on the right track. We need somebody to understand that $50,000 is the limit. So if high school X spends 40 and high school Y spends 20, we're over the $50,000 limit. That should trigger a process for that contract to become a larger contract for the entire district with a budgetary amount set to it so that no one is in violation. Right now, that is an area with contracts where we don't have that central repository of software. So we're really reliant upon everyone's sort of self-reporting. I believe we have really great and honest people within our school district. I also believe in trust and verify. That verification system of an online software process by which we can gather all these contracts and they're entered will provide us the opportunity to monitor those purchases more closely. So yes, but there is a plan to fix.
Thank you.
Okay. And just for the public's knowledge, I have not issued a P-card or any other board member because we don't have any. Okay. Thank you again for coming today. Great presentation. All right, our, moving on. Oops, got you on there. Next is our middle school proximity. Dr. Bernier, would you like to say anything while we get our transition here?
I'm certainly more than capable and more than willing to. Certainly, as Dr. Malloy gets ready to take his position for the second round of understanding and discussion from all of you regarding a middle school proximity plan. We had our first town hall the other evening over at Challenger Middle. We have another one this evening on the east side of town. Really excited about the continuation of being able to bring out our strategic plan and bring out our proximity plan for middle schools. Again, keep in mind, I think it's important that proximity is literally that. It's trying to create proximate attendance zones surrounding a school building where students could be able to walk, bike, or ride safely to their school building, trying to get back more towards community schools. When that happens, you begin to determine choices. There are choices of which a parent can choose a middle school, just like last year where they chose an elementary, and transportation, if they're not within walking distance or they have a hazardous walking condition, transportation can be provided. There will still remain the opportunity for parents who want to choose a school outside of their proximity zone to choose that, but working off the elementary model, they will have to provide their own transportation. Again, it's an opportunity for us to increase the number of, the number of, to create better efficiencies for our transportation department. A year ago, we were looking for over 175 bus drivers. We are still currently looking for about 70. Part of why we're looking for so few less is because of the reduction of miles in our elementary runs. We never said elementary would fix everything. We believe middle school is the next legitimate step, and then upping our recruitment processes and finding those individuals willing to drive our buses will be incredibly important. The focus for me, however, and I can't say it enough because people often talk about efficiencies, saved miles, warranties, the reality of these plans is to create more community-like schools and to ensure that our students get to school on time. That is our most comprehensive need and why I have focused simply on this versus, and I think it's important to say this too, in 2026, state law is going to require school districts in the state of Florida to flip their schedules. Elementary will go in the first tier, middle schools in the second tier, and high schools last. Because high schools are credit-bearing classes, it is essential that we work every process possible to try to increase our on-time delivery. I'll turn it over to Dr. Malloy at this time unless there are questions for me.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Good afternoon, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a follow-up presentation on the draft proximity plan for middle schools, building upon the constructive feedback and insights shared during our previous meeting. As we delve into the technical and procedural intricacies outlined in the upcoming slides, it's important to underscore the integration of this plan with the Elementary Proximity Project, which was initiated at the begin, at the beginning of the current school year. Acknowledging that this redesign is part of a broader strategy rather than a standalone solution, our team remains committed to advancing initiatives that enhance our school district's ability to ensure punctual arrivals and departures for our students. The agenda for today's presentation focuses on critical discussion points. We'll review the proposed middle school proximity map in the corresponding school choices, as well as the affected student population and the district's transportation responsibilities. We'll also discuss streamlined approaches and processes for our art application and K-8 programs. Joining me is Irma Lancaster, Director of Strategic Engagement, who will provide a detailed overview of our robust communication plan for the upcoming changes in student assignment. Finally, we'll wrap up with a discussion of essential tasks critical for the successful implementation of these proposed changes. In summarizing the pertinent details of the implementation phase, it's important to note that both the rollout and associated procedures align with the principles established in the Elementary Proximity Plan. Scheduled for implementation in the 2024-2025 school year, the proposed middle school zones will have a direct impact on incoming sixth-grade students, each would select from the schools within the new zone, middle school students new to the district, and rising middle school students living outside of their current school's proximity attendance zone and needing Slide four presents the proposed proximity map for middle schools, scheduled for implementation next year. If you recall from our, from our October 11th presentation, the number of school choices our families have for middle school is reduced from 5.3 to 2.2. The average square miles covered by district-provided transportation is set at 87, approximately half of the mileage the district is responsible in the current plan. The recommended middle school attendance zones adopt a double alphabet approach, ranging from AA to JJ with the exclusion of II to potential confusion with capital I and lowercase L. Missing from the last presentation was proximity zone LL for the Sanibel School, our only barrier island middle school option. These proximity zones have been meticulously mapped to accommodate student growth and account for the addition of future schools. This slide provides information about the schools designated for each proximity zone. To illustrate, if the plan is implemented and you live in proximity zone EE for middle schools and your child is entering sixth grade next year, the available options would be Fort Myers Middle and Dunbar Middle Schools. The district will offer transportation exclusively to these two schools for families in proximity zone EE. It's crucial to highlight specific modifications such as aligning North Fort Myers East to State Road 31 with middle schools in both North Fort Myers and Cape Coral. The presentation will delve, will later delve into the comprehensive plan for the three affected K-8 schools. This encompasses the Alva School, initially discussed with a one-to-one boundary for middle schools, but now slightly expanded due to overlapping and extending elementary school proximity zones. Underlined are the associated procedures for continuation, the ability to stay at a school while living outside of the proximity zone, sibling preference, and exceptional student education with disabilities. For all rising middle school students, there is an option to continue attending their current school. This provides a sense of continuity for students as they transition to the next grade level. To facilitate this process, there will be a continuation enrollment window preceding the new middle school lottery. During this period, families can choose to stay out of the zone, thereby waiving transportation, or opt to enter their new middle school zone. In terms of the sibling option, we understand that families may be living outside of their new proximity zone and have siblings attending a particular school. In such cases, the sibling option will allow families to enroll their rising middle school students in the same school as their siblings, even if it's outside of their designated proximity zone. Students with disabilities in the exceptional student education program can maintain their enrollment and continue to receive transportation through the school district. This ensures that students with special needs have the necessary support during this change. It's important to note that transportation will not be provided unless the current school is within the new middle school proximity boundaries. This means that families opting for the continuation or sibling options will need to arrange their own transportation if the current school is outside of the new proximity zone. These approaches aim to accommodate the diverse needs of our students and their families during this change. The middle school proximity plan will not impact the programs and offerings of individual schools. There are six arts application programs that will continue at their current sites, and the standard reservation of seats and application and audition process will remain unchanged. I listed those schools here as Benita Springs Middle, Center for the Arts, Cypress Lake Middle, Harns Marsh Middle School, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, Oak Hammock Middle School, and Veterans Park Academy for the Arts. The key difference is that these programs and their allotted program seats will now be accessible district-wide. For instance, if you reside in South Fort Myers but aspire for your child to attend North Fort Myers Academy, recognized by many as a top-six arts school, they can apply, audition, and potentially secure entrance using the reserved seat allotment for the arts program. However, it's important to note that if they are admitted and the middle school is outside of their middle school proximity zone, transportation must be provided by the family. Emphasizing once more, transportation will only be provided if the school arts program is within the student's middle school proximity zone. Slide nine, oh, sorry. My apologies. Another factor to consider in the middle school proximity plan is the disparity in zones, size, location, capacity between elementary and middle school maps. While this isn't an issue when dealing exclusively with elementary and middle schools, it becomes significant for our three K-8 programs, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, the Alva School, and Veterans Park Academy for the Arts. This is not an issue for our fourth K-8 program, the Sanibel School, as it is the only middle school located on a barrier island. To address the impact on families, the proposed approach for these K-8 programs is to emphasize the more extensive zone associated with either the elementary or middle school option of the K-8. For North Fort Myers Academy and Veterans Park Academy, this aligns... For North Fort Myers Academy and Veterans Park Academy, this aligns with the larger middle school zones CC and HH. However, for the Alva School, this corresponds to the larger elementary zone D. We'll delve into the implications of this and how it affects transportation in the upcoming slides. Slide nine illustrates middle school zone CC on the left, highlighting North Fort Myers Academy. On the right, the image overlays elementary school boundaries B and C onto proposed middle school zone CC. The proposed strategy is to grant families residing in CC the option to choose North Fort Myers Academy as both an elementary and middle school option. Anticipated impacts on transportation are minimal since the middle school zone encompasses the smaller elementary proximity zone B. This approach mitigates the potential scenario of buses picking up middle school students in areas where the elementary side of the K-8 was not previously an option. Additionally, it broadens access for elementary students to North Fort Myers Academy and addresses capacity concerns in zone B. Slide 10 showcases the Alva School scenario, featuring the smaller middle school zone DD on the left and the larger elementary zone D on the right. The proposed approach is to provide families residing in zone D the choice to select the Alva School as both an elementary and middle school option. Again, the anticipated effects on transportation are minimal as the elementary school zone encompasses the smaller middle, middle school proximity zone. This strategy prevents the situation where elementary school students in zone D, particularly those residing in the far west of the zone and outside of the middle school zone, could choose Alva in elementary but not in middle. The overarching goal in each K-8 scenario is to minimize the impact on families while maintaining a focus on transportation efficiency and addressing capacity concerns. I am now pleased to introduce Ms. Irma Lancaster, Director of Strategic Communications, who will be guiding us through the communications slides. Originally, we had entertained the idea of presenting these next three slides as a musical duet on ice. However, due to the rising costs of ice and my less-than-stellar singing abilities, we've opted for a more traditional presentation format. Over to you, Ms. Lancaster.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. Good afternoon, everyone. Before going into the communications outreach for this year, I wanted to first share some of our communications and data from last year during elementary proximity. The team executed our traditional communications methods through direct messaging to families, social media, media coverage, our website, educational videos, and educational graphics and one-sheets. We also were allotted a small advertising budget, which we used for paid advertising on television, social media, and billboards. In addition, we promoted and supported the community town halls. We were also onsite at various community events, handing out flyers, helping parents sign up for focus, and answering questions. We also understood that there were schools that were going to be heavily impacted, so we worked with them to execute communications to their communities, and we supported them at various events at schools and at community locations. You can see some of the numbers of our reach, nearly 90,000 emails, over 200,000 texts, and 15,000 phone calls. Those numbers seem quite large considering the amount of families that were going to be affected, and the reason why is because we were strategic in our targeting of messaging. As open enrollment went on, we would look at the list that week of which families still had not made a decision, and we would send a new message to just those families. And that continued until the enrollment period was complete. And you can see that we had nearly 9,000 of the 11,000 families that needed to take action that had done so by the time the enrollment period ended. Of course, we still had a percentage that had not made their decision, and we continued to support them with the hundreds of calls we received daily on what their options were because they had not made a decision. Currently, our communications are focused on raising awareness that middle school proximity is coming. We have updated information on our website, and we have shared, and will continue to share information with our principals. We're heavily promoting our town halls with direct messaging, news media, as well as organic and paid online advertising, and we have created a survey to gather feedback that is being shared at town halls and will share on our online platforms. Now, pending board approval, the communications team will execute similar communications to the elementary proximity, seeing as how they worked well. We will send direct messaging to families via email, phone calls, and text messages, update our website with the new information, create collateral materials and update what we already have, continue to run organic and paid advertising. We'll also work with the planning department and student enrollment to identify any possible locations that may be heavily impacted by this change, and again, work with them directly to promote and raise awareness at their sites. We will also continue identifying opportunities in the community to participate in events and speaking engagement to share that information. I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Malloy.
Thank you. The essential tasks and timeline for the middle school proximity plan are provided for your review. Our next meeting for proximity is scheduled for November 21st, where we will present the final plan for student assignment housing the middle school proximity plan. Upon approval, this will kickstart the communications campaign and preparations for the continuation window in middle school lottery. I'm grateful, grateful for this opportunity and would now like to hand over the floor to the superintendent and the board for further discussion.
I'd like to thank Ms. Lancaster and Dr. Malloy for their presentation and the comprehensive look at what it will take not only to change the process by which students will enroll and attend middle school, but also the care and effort it takes to look at other potential problems that seem so simple when you just say, "We're going to do middle school proximity." There are extenuating circumstances with senators for the arts where choice still needs to be maintained, as well as the plan for certain K-8 communities to ensure that an elementary student has the ability to not only apply, but then when the middle school zone is applied, to be able to remain. So I, it's really a comprehensive amount of work. The feedback from the first town hall was good. We got some information that we need to consider. I've shared with all of you in a one-on-one, there's some other potential areas that we've, we've talked about, and we'll continue to help support those communities, and look forward to continuing to gaining input through the town halls and through Mr. Malloy's work with, with the community to continue to refine this process to the point we get it to you for final approval. So looking forward to your discussion as it helps us continue to hone the edge of this, of this process.
Okay. Board members, questions? Ms. Patrica, then Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. So I'm missing the map chip in my brain.
Yeah.
So if you could go back to the maps with the DD and the C and the CC and all of that. I think I understand from what the superintendent just said that we will not have a situation where we have an elementary because of the maps we're choosing or the zones we're choosing. We will not have a situation where an elementary school child will lose transportation to the middle school in a K-8 scenario. Is that a fair?
That's correct. And Board Member Giovanelli had brought it up as a unique circumstance, and when we took a look at it, there were, there were incongruities with the map at, at one elementary side or the middle side. So what we did is we extended it to choose either the, the larger middle, for the case of Veterans and North Academy, or the larger elementary for Alva. So what that requires us to do on the internal side is we have to create three unique shape files now for those K-8s for that particular purpose, so that they can continue with transportation at the, you know, at their K-8.
Okay, great. So I don't need to understand the maps then? And then, is there an arts middle school where you have the audition process? Is there an arts middle school available to every student with district transportation in this plan?
We'd have to review with district transportation. What we presented today was a change. Previously, our arts application programs were only available by sub-zone and zone. Now they are available, now they're available district-wide. So those roughly, I think this past year was in between 40 and 50 reserved seats, would now be open district-wide. We'll review where those art schools are and then get back, back to you in the board update, so that those six you can see, and then which zone potentially we would have to do some more work on.
I appreciate that, and I, I would suspect that if we have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10 zones and only six schools, that the answer is probably no. So I would like to find out what we could do to make sure, from an equity perspective, that we do have a program like that available to every kid. With district transportation, to me, that's the key. Two of my four attended an art school, and it was, they would not have had any exposure to the arts in my home, and it really improved their educational experience and educational outcomes for them. So I just feel like it's really important that every kid get exposure and access to that with district transportation. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica, I just, I did want to address that. So while we have six arts audition and application processes, all 21 middle schools offer band and visual arts. 15 have chorus, 10 have dance, 12 offer drama, and 10 feature orchestras. So we're very close to, I would say we're, we're a few years away from almost an arts-for-all at the middle school level. So those are what a, what an arts program would offer, so we're just working to add more and more schools.
As we've talked, and if I may, as we've talked about these particular processes, while not everybody can compare to a center for the arts, there is an expectation from the superintendent and through the academic services and through Dr. Malloy's numbers of where we currently reside, and with the work of a great gentleman named Dr. Tomaszewski, we are working to ensure that there's a viable arts program in every single school. Will it always compare to a center for the arts? Probably not, because there's additional investment and there's other work on behalf of the school, but an arts program in band, music, fine arts, drawing, painting, orchestra where it's appropriate and where we have enough students is vital to every school building, not just a center for the arts.
And, and the, you just, you said the key thing, will it compare to a center for the arts? The answer is no. And if we have kids that don't have access to that higher level of instruction and just sort of educational outcomes based on their desires or talents or whatever, I, I think that's inequitable.
I think it will compare, but people who work at art centers will say they do not. I think the aspect of allowing every student district-wide to be able to choose to go to one of the center of the arts is an, an area where the Dr. Malloy explained that I think we may be missing in the larger, in the larger presentation. That is the beginning of a movement towards what I refer to as a magnet program, where a student district-wide is able to go. Most large districts do not transport magnet students. What they wind up is geographically having enough of center-for-the-art programs contained within the geographical boundaries of the district that all families could potentially belong. And as schools show more promise to become a magnet program in the center of the arts, as their music and their drama and their art programs get better and better through musical performance assessments and other things, and, and attracting the right talent of teachers, then we need to develop a long-term, a process where that school could apply to become a center, create reserved seats for that school, and allow those students in proximity to those school buildings to have that transportation option that you're asking for. I completely understand what you're saying, but it has to start somewhere and it has to continue to grow. And, and at that point, I think to Mr. Malloy's, sorry, Dr. Malloy's point, we'll be at a point at some time in the school district's history if we can continue to focus on arts education for all students to be in that place.
One more. Oh, you're done?
No.
Good. Mr. Fisher, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this presentation, Dr. Malloy. By the way, ice may be expensive, but roller skates are not. Going back to the, the town hall the other night, thank you for doing that, Dr. Bernier, and as well as Dr. Malloy. Irma, thank you, everyone. It was a good time and a, a good response out there. One of the issues that came up is, in my district was Challenger and Patriot that have a bit of a shared campus. I know that was a concern. I don't know if you guys had a chance to address that with the parents individually or be able to look at anything with that.
So we're going to do, we're going to do the, the capacity work tomorrow with, with our team to take a look at, at how we can address, potentially address that issue. You're dealing with four schools in a very close area in Cape Coral, Trafalgar Middle School, Challenger Middle School, Patriot Elementary, and Skyline Elementary, and now we're actually bringing in boundaries. We have to be, we're, we're going to run those scenarios and see if we can accompany the capacity and see what we can do. There's other preferences that we can do as well, but we're, we're going to do that work tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Last two, just communications comments, and thank you, Director Lancaster. Certainly, a lot of things going out there. Certainly, my wife and I got a lot of text messages, so it got out there. In regards to, one of the things that I think is a little bit confusing for some people still, and, and Dr. Bernier explained this very well in the beginning, this is kind of the difference with proximity versus school choice. I think people are kind of confusing it too. So maybe from communications aspect, you know, because I've gotten some emails, I'm sure others have, just going back to the elementary part on that. So I think that's a bit of confusion. And another thing I talked to, I think, Dr. Malloy, we talked about this, was, you know, ESD and gifted programs, kind of, there's some confusion in regards to that, so maybe some of that could be addressed in communications, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you for this presentation, and Ms. Patrica, thank you so much because that is exactly what was going through my head the whole entire time, is how, when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at, when you look at their, the application process, there's, JJ has two of those schools versus three of them who have no, none of those schools. And then when I look at EE and the ability of perhaps the community to even transport their kids to have the option to go to this, because now we're telling them, "You have those two schools to choose from. If you want to go to one of these arts or application process, you must go through the process, you must apply, and, and you must take your child there." Where a lot of the, a lot of the families that live in certain areas, and it's not just that area, we do understand too, and I understand the whole process of why we're doing this, but then I also understand how we have families who work two, three jobs, they don't have the luxury of dropping their kids off to that. And for us to say that all the schools are equal, we know that that is not true. We would love to have that be that way, and that would be a wonderful thing to have. I mean, that's what we, you know, hope for in all that we do, but I know that they do have like step or, you know, chorus or different methods, but yet when you put it compared to a center or what those kids are exposed to, or the opportunity that they have, I don't know how we do better to make sure that in all of this that we're doing, that we make sure that they all have the same opportunities to, to be, if they want to be in the arts or if they want to do whatever, that we give them that same opportunity, and not just because we have to draw a line, you know, to say this is where, where they're going to go. And again, I understand the, the whole process and why we are doing this, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, of what that looks like for, for our communities and our children.
Anyone else? Yeah. Okay, Ms. Giovanelli.
Just thank you for hearing me and about that, that piece of it, and I appreciate that. I'm, I, but I, I kind of echo some of the concerns. We want to make sure the opportunity is the same in every zone, and, and it's not that, it's not the case. But we also, we, we know Cypress Lake Middle School was an art school, but I don't see very much art coming from there like other, like Fort Myers Academy of the Arts. So I don't know if the vision's the same or, you know, if people are collaborating and making sure that the vision is the same. I just think that sometimes we got to make sure they're getting the support to have the same vision. So I think it's about accountability, the same vision. I think there's still a lot of work that has to go into to make sure that every zone has that opportunity, and making sure the resources are there. I know it's, it's a stretch, but it can be, but I think we can, I know that from what Fort Myers Academy, or especially North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, that's just spectacular. And I can't wait to see what happens with the Black Box in the E-zone and what those two schools do with that. I mean, that opportunity is not actually in the South Zone at this time. Well, Gateway is, but it's very different from what's in North Fort Myers. So there's a lot of work, but I, you know, I'm excited about the, the changes that you made, and thank you so much for listening.
Yes, Ms. Morgan.
Sorry, I'm coming in. I said I wouldn't, but I, I have to say that I do share the concern about the arts, and I also appreciate Ms. Giovanelli's comment about, are the arts academies equivalent? You know, and so I think we need to have a better understanding of what our expectations are at those schools, what the offerings are, and whether the opportunities really are equitable. It may be that North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts should become a... should become a, um, magnet school. And then, and then we, we look at opportunities to maybe to do something with some of the other arts programs. But I wanted to share that comment. Thank you.
I just want to say that it's come a long ways from when I was in junior high here. Okay, we didn't have an art school at all. You know, it was all focused on your basic education. We had a band, we had chorus, and actually I played the violin horrifically. But it's, uh, it's, we're moving in the right direction. And I wish we could wave a wand, have all the money we need to make every school boom, it was there. But I agree, and I think the rest of this board agrees. If you can come with us with reasonable plans to try to get more out there, we will definitely support it, I'm sure. Just probably the consensus I got here. Again, thank you so much for this and good luck. Oh, last thing is, just for the public, this is not, every line here is not set in stone. This is, you know, the fan number two. And it's getting closer and closer to where we want it. Okay, thanks again.
All right, Dr. Brineer, would you like to now introduce your third team here?
Well, the third team is making her way to the, the area. She has a whole team. I know some of the board members have been wondering, who are all the people with the Lee County school badges on? They are proud members of the ESAL ELL team. They do amazing work in helping to support our schools and helping support their new leader. We've had a significant transition with a, a longtime veteran of the school district of Lee County moving towards retirement that lasted, I think, about two and a half weeks before she decided as soon as she could get back, she would go and put her skills as an ELL teacher to work at one of our middle schools and is, is currently filled one of our vacancies. But in the meantime, we've been lucky and through our efforts to be able to recruit Soweta Sarmiento. Ms. Sarmiento comes from previous districts, previous experience specifically around ELL, was a standout in the interview related to her skills in order to help us begin to work on the trajectories and to, to ensure that each one of our students achieves his or highest, his or her highest personal potential. That includes, when we say that, when we say all, each and all students, that includes our ELL students. And she's here to update you on the ESAL department, some of the directions she has been taking and some of the really hard work that her team has been accomplishing as our schools, as we envision a new future for our largest growing student population in the school district of Lee County.
All right, thank you for that introduction. Um, and I thank you for this afternoon, allowing me to present an update on the ESAL department. Walk you through today's presentation. We will discuss the following topics. A brief introduction into who I am, since I am new to Lee County. Give you some brief overview on the data to go over the state of ESAL in Lee County. And then the new vision and direction that I would like to see for the ESAL department. So just a little background history on me. I was actually born and raised in Miami. So I am a product of Miami-Dade County Public Schools, where there I was an ESAL student. So this work is very, I'm very passionate about it, and it means a lot to me, because it's a full circle moment for me to be here today to help these children, if, if that makes sense. So I left Miami and went to college at UCF, where I earned an elementary education degree and then my master's in educational leadership. And I stayed in central Florida and taught several grades. Taught second, fifth, sixth grade. When I was at the middle school level, I did teach intensive reading. And I taught back then what we call DLA classes, so those developmental language arts for the ESAL students. I did teach those classes as well. Then I moved outside the classroom. I became a reading coach, a CCT, which is what we refer to as ESAL contacts here in Lee County, and an MTSS coach. After my time at that venture and my journey, I became an assistant principal of instruction during the wonderful COVID time. So I was there in the trenches, rebuilding master schedules multiple times to accommodate the launchet and the face-to-face platforms that we all experienced. Assistant principal of instruction is what we call here, assistant principal of the curriculum. So that's the correlation there. And then finally, after I was an assistant principal, I moved into a senior administrator role where I oversaw curriculum and instruction for multilingual services. That's the ESAL department where I came from. And I was, that's my team that I worked with. There was about 50 of us that worked to support just over 30,000 ESAL students in the county. And now I'm here today, supporting the 18,000 that we currently have in Lee County. So we'll start with talking a little bit about the numbers in the next few slides. We'll review the current ELL data and trends to gain a better understanding of how our student group is performing on state assessments. It's important to note that our data will always be a moving target, because as students in the ESAL program become proficient and they exit the program, then the target changes. Okay? Some terms that I just briefly want to go over with you, because you'll hear me referencing them throughout the presentation and just want to make sure that we have the same terminology. One of them is ELD, so that's, I'm referring to English Language Development. ELL or ELL or EL or English Language Learners or English Learners. And lately in the ESAL world, we refer to them as well as multilingual learners. DLR, which is our developmental language arts through ESAL class in reading. LY, those are our current students in the ESAL program receiving services. And then once they exit the program, their code changes to LF, and we monitor them for two years. Language domains, I'll be using those in reference to when we're talking about language development and the WEDA access test. We have four of them, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. This is the big one, the Meta Consent Decree. It's the, the law that provides that equal access to our students in the ESAL program, so that they have the equal access to educational programs and that there's a structure in place for them. WEDA, it's a consortium of states that came together to develop the specific English language proficiency standards that then we assess during the WEDA access annual test that we give here in the state of Florida to measure the students' academic language skills. All right, so let's start with the number of LY students trends that we're seeing. So in the past few years, you can see that the number of newcomer students has significantly increased in Lee County, particularly during that COVID time period. From the 2020 through 2023 time periods, these are the numbers on the slide that you see at the end of the school year. So that's representing the end. And then when I came in in the summer, just before preschool, we were at 20,582 students that were, at that time, pending and in the ESAL program. This past summer, we did automatically exit 858 students that performed on grade level during the spring 2023 testing season, which accounts for some of that dip from the end of the school year in 2023 to the start of 2023, 2024. And just to give you some current numbers today, we have 18,478 students in the ESAL program labeled as LY. The majority of them speak Spanish, with 15,176 of them that speak Spanish. Our next highest language is Haitian Creole with 1,201, and Portuguese sits at 586. So in the past three years, you see a growth of 8,000 students in this specific category. These are our FAST ELA reading scores, and it represents how our ELL students are performing versus those students that are not in the ESAL program. These are in grades K through 10. And you'll note the significant achievement gap between the two groups. This is part of that moving target that I mentioned earlier. So for instance, these, this 10% of students that you see here that were on grade level most likely have now exited the program because they were proficient. And so now that target basically starts back at zero. Does that make sense? And so the PM one that we just took currently at the beginning of this year is now at 3%. So the ESAL students currently, right now, when they took PM one, are at 3% proficient. So that's our new baseline for LY for this current school year. Um, I'm currently partnering with elementary curriculum team, executive directors, the chief academic officer and deputy superintendent to help train teachers in the science of reading with specific modules dedicated to oral language development and language acquisition, which in turn will help start to close the gap. These are our high school credit, oh, no, I skipped a page, excuse me. And I don't have any funny jokes today, I'm sorry. On this slide, you will notice that our LY students in grades K through 2 have a bigger gap than those in the upper grade levels. We have purchased the supplemental program of Imagine Math for our LY students, and so they all have access to it now and have requests coming in. And we also are doing after-school tutoring sessions specifically on math for elementary and middle school students to help support them in the area of math. Now we can move on to the high school, the high school credits, Algebra I and Geometry. My department is currently collaborating with the math curriculum department to provide professional learning to their math leads to bring back those ELL strategies to their school sites. As I stated earlier, all Level 2s were automatically rostered in Imagine Math, and it does provide support through algebra, through that algebra course. So they are, they have access to the program and can use it. These are the trends from the Next Generation Sunshine State Standards in the area of science. Our PM growth was 7% for both grade levels. So PM one from last year to PM three, so the state assessment at the end, grew 7%. It's important to note that when these students are tested at these specific grade levels, they are expected to know content standards all the way leading up to that grade level. So if I was a new student in an ESAL program coming in as a fifth grader, I am expected to know content that was taught in science from kindergarten all the way through fourth grade, as well as whatever my fifth grade teacher is teaching me currently that year. So that's an important thing to consider when these students are taking these tests in fifth grade. And it's the same thing for eighth grade. It'd be sixth grade, seventh grade content is also being assessed at the eighth grade level. And similarly to the math data, we are also working with the science department to provide professional learning opportunities to their leads as well. Continuing with science, this time for biology, there was a 3% growth this past year that brought our students back to where they were in 2021. From PM one to PM three, those students grew 10% on target. All of the high schools increased in some capacity. So when we started planning with the science department, they specifically asked us to focus on biology as a part of an upcoming presentation for their science leads. So that's something that they want us to make sure we focus on. In the subject areas of social studies, we are unfortunately seeing a downward trend in passing scores. As we saw in previous slides, our ELA numbers were significantly lower, which can be playing a huge part in why this area is not showing progress forward. Social studies content relies heavily on academic language and reading comprehension. It's important to note as well that background knowledge will have an impact here. Many of our students have different experiences with government systems, because many are coming from another country, that their government looks different. So they won't have as much of that background knowledge when applying the concept here. Right, and before we get into the last set of data, I wanted to give you a quick overview on WEDA. WEDA developed five language development standards to ensure the integration of language and content in lessons and provide an opportunity for ELLs to access grade level content. These standards address how language is used for thinking and doing in the content areas. The first standard addresses how ELLs communicate for social and instructional purposes in the school setting. This is a standard that usually our LY students develop first. The next four standards address how ELLs communicate information, ideas, and concepts necessary for academic success in language arts, math, science, and social studies. I mentioned earlier that the WEDA accesses an English language proficiency test, and it's rated on a scale from one through six. And four is what is considered proficient on this, by the state. So if, on a scale from one to six, if a student scores a level four on any of the four language domains, that is considered proficient. So now let's take a look at the data by domains and the overall score. This is the WEDA access scores from the past couple of years. And every single year, any LY student is tested on this assessment. There is a formula on how to calculate the overall score when combining the four language domains, and you'll see that there at the bottom of the screen. 35% of their score comes from listening and writing, and then 15% comes from reading, I'm sorry, listening and speaking. Then they put that all together and come up with an overall score. If you're wanting to know a little bit of the state comparison, just kind of see how we've aligned with the average for the state. The state was at 14% this past year. So we're just slightly below where the state average is in Lee County. Right, so that was a lot of data. I'm sure you'll have questions for me at the end, and I do have some notes for questions you may have. But now I want to get into a little bit about my vision of how I would like to transform the ESAL department. And really, my vision is simple. It's what you see there on the screen, which is building capacity within our schools. My small team that's here with me today cannot be at every school every single day trying to teach every child. So we need to make sure that we're building capacity within the schools in order to get the work done. Okay, so the quote on the slide that I have there, "We cannot become what we want by remaining what we are," particularly resonates with me, because based on the data that was presented, transformative change in how we do work in Lee County currently to serve this population is needed in order to grow into a world-class system that includes our ELL students. One of my first goals was to start creating a common language around the words we use to describe and talk about our ELL students. Think about the following quote and define to yourself the term monolingual. The definition of monolingual is a person who speaks only one language and is not currently in the process of acquiring another one. Many of our ELL students already speak multiple languages at home. It may not be English, but they may already speak multiple languages at home, depending on their background and circumstances. We have many students that are coming from other countries that already speak Portuguese and Spanish, or some other students that already speak Haitian Creole and French. So by using the word monolingual to speak about one of our students, we're using an inaccurate term. When referring to a student new to English, please use the term multilingual learner or English language learner. We need to shift our mindset to start seeing language as an asset instead of a deficit. When I arrived to Lee County, the district ESAL specialists and schools did not have a clear understanding of what their role was in supporting schools in the area of curriculum and instruction. One of the first things I did was to create a structure that focused on three areas to give all stakeholders clear expectations on what and how the ESAL specialists can support their schools. The ELL tiers of support you see on the slide are all the responsibilities the ESAL specialists are asked to assist schools with. They help schools, they help provide schools professional learning, help teachers align their instructional planning to include those four language domains, which helps connect with the executive director's benchmark alignment goal, and provide virtual and on-demand support four days a week. They model and provide guidance for lessons and interventions as well. In order to capture all of the supports that they give, I designed an action planner for our district ESAL specialist to help guide the supports given at each school with the three focus areas. And during the initial visit, they collaborated with the school team to set objectives and goals for each area. Here is an example of what the action planner may look like. This was a guide given to the district ESAL specialist during preschool to prepare them for their initial school meetings. You will notice that there is a section for each of the three areas of focus we previously discussed by, by action steps, then deliverables and timelines on when those action steps are expected to be completed by. As part of the progress monitoring, the ESAL specialists will schedule a mid-year review of the action plan with their schools to provide an update on the action steps developed as well as an update on making any necessary changes to the plan for second semester. The last piece of the action planner will be at the end of year meeting with the school to elicit their feedback on the three focus areas and then start planning the next steps for the upcoming school year. So that was a lot about the district ESAL specialists. And now we're going to talk a little bit about the role of the ESAL contacts at the school. Part of my vision is I'm focusing on shifting the mindset Part of my vision is I'm focusing on shifting the mindset of our ESOL contacts and administrators to see them not only working in compliance, but looking at curriculum as well. Curriculum and instruction is multiple parts under that meta consent decree. And if we want to see positive change in student achievement, we know that the role of the ESOL contact will need to go beyond compliance tasks. The person the principal selects as their ESOL contact should be someone with experience in teaching ELLs and someone who is eager to provide coaching and professional learning to their teachers on campus. This person will help create that unified vision needed to establish best practices that will maximize student learning. You will see throughout the presentation how these three areas of focus on the action planner are tied into the role of the ESOL contacts, and we will go through each one in more depth. The first area is ongoing professional learning. This area is critical, and we expect ESOL contacts to grow in this area to help build that capacity within their schools. We want to see collaboration between the ESOL contact with instructional coaches when developing professional learning sessions at schools. This will ensure that sessions contain that ESOL perspective. It is important to protect time to train and guide ESOL paraprofessionals as well. They need to know what their roles are when they're in the school sites. We also want our ESOL contacts to continue to promote professional learning opportunities for teachers and staffs. All the sessions that we provide here at the district build upon one another and are meant to offer foundational knowledge about language acquisition and best practices that will help educators use the Six Principles to Teach with Excellence. The ESOL department wants to empower ESOL contacts at schools to guide teachers and ESOL paraprofessionals when supporting English language learners. Here is a list of the ongoing professional learning we are offering throughout the year. There is a variety of modes in which teachers can attend to accommodate their schedules. Trainings are virtual, face-to-face, and even after-hour paid sessions. So there's lots of options for teachers and staff. We're really excited to partner with Beth Skelton, a consultant who is an expert in the ESOL field and provides dynamic and engaging professional development to our teachers with easy-to-implement strategies. We also offer a two-part training to our ESOL paraprofessionals to support them both for compliance tasks and for classroom strategies for the classroom. The professional development team provides teachers with ESOL endorsement classes to strengthen their expertise as well. These courses, we want to make sure our teachers are completing and getting the training that they need to support the ELLs in their classroom. The professional learning area is an area of focus aligned to Lee County's strategic plan of excellence to deliver quality education for our ELLs. The next area of our cycle is to help close the achievement gap is progress monitoring. According to the ELL plan, we are responsible to observe and monitor for equal access provided for ELLs. During this monitoring process, it is important to take into account monitoring students' program data to guide conversations with teachers and students. These are some of the areas I have highlighted that can help ESOL contacts as they progress monitor their Ls. They must be familiar with WIDA Access 2.0 and progress monitoring those scores. ESOL contacts need to monitor and keep that data up to date. The ESOL contact is an instrumental member of the MTSS teams at schools. This will ensure ELLs are provided with appropriate instructional techniques to support that language development. ESOL contacts monitor also the implementation of practices that were given during professional learning, and then the implementation as well of lesson planning during classroom visits. And lastly, it's important to monitor program data throughout the year. They should use that data to make recommendations for placements to support ELLs' language needs, especially at the secondary level. I mentioned placement decisions a few times, so I want us to take a quick look at what I mean by that. In collaboration with the directors of curriculum, the chief academic officer, and deputy superintendent, we have developed a progression plan for our English learners in grades K through 12 to provide time and resources for language acquisition. This is an example of the middle school progression plan that will assist schools when creating their future master schedule for the 2024, 2025 year, school year. So we've created one as well for elementary and one for high school. The progression includes a creation of ELD and DLR courses to help with language development and foundations and reading skills before being placed in an intensive reading course. These crucial first steps are critical to language development in a safe place to help transfer their native language to English. We have also selected curriculum that is aligned with the current reading program being used in intensive reading courses to help with a smoother transition for teachers. At the elementary level, we have selected an additional explicit curriculum specifically designed to develop oral language and listening skills, which are two of our language domains. We are excited to share this with school leaders soon when the planning for next year begins. This is our last focus area that we will dive into today, which is supporting PLCs. When thinking of PLCs and common planning, think of the important role that the ESOL contact is expected to play to ensure teachers are planning with ELLs in mind. It's important that ESOL contacts protect time to assist during planning sessions. Their input will be key to strengthening instruction so that it's comprehensible for Ls and aligned to benchmarks, and continuing that work from our executive directors. It is also important that they meet with teachers to provide specific instructional support and continuously model the use of scaffolds during professional learning sessions. And then continue to model those, establishing, I'm sorry, that common language where the language standards and language proficiency levels are used to support instruction. ESOL contacts can also provide support on student group data specifically for Ls to help the teachers progress monitor that data throughout the year. Our department has been working to embed scaffolds and strategies by content areas in our catalog PDs. And as previously mentioned, we have been collaborating with those curriculum content areas to provide professional learning to their content leads and bring those strategies back to the classrooms. Now let's dive deeper into how ESOL contacts can help PLCs plan for their ELLs with their language proficiency levels in mind. And that's what you see here on the screen. It's an example of how the WIDA CAN Do descriptors were being used in a planning session for a 7th grade civics lesson, and how the PLC looked at the different language proficiency levels to determine what that ESOL student is able to produce. This lesson is aligned with the standard you see there, SS.7.CG.3.3, described the structure and function of the three branches of government established in the U.S. Constitution. During common planning, these teachers used the WIDA CAN Do descriptors to drive the planning process for their students and assigned a task for each level based on the student's language proficiency levels. So for instance, the teachers recognize that if a student is at a Level 1 in language proficiency, then the student would only be able to, I'm sorry, indicate relationships by drawing and labeling content-related pictures on familiar topics, or describe processes or cycles by labeling diagrams. And then you see there underneath that as a result, they plan for students to work with a partner, use descriptions to label the branches of government, of the federal government. Whereas for a student that's at the Level 3 language proficiency, the student is able now to compare and contrast information and produce descriptive paragraphs around the central idea. So the teachers plan for the students to complete the task by describing the powers within the three branches of government. The differentiation of instruction allows English learners the ability to learn the content while still scaffolding the lesson to meet their individual needs. It is important to recognize that the goal when planning to incorporate support is not to water down the curriculum, but to make the content accessible for English learners. To support administrators during PLCs, we can provide them with some look force. Here are some pieces of evidence they may see during planning that shows that teachers are planning with excellence. Teachers will have conversations about how students will demonstrate understanding of content. And these conversations will specifically tackle those four language domains. Examples could be looking for videos that can activate that ELL's background knowledge, or selecting specific images that are intentionally used to help students make a deeper connection with the content. We want to see teachers discussing key terms that students need to understand, specifically that academic vocabulary. And you want to hear them discussing ways to facilitate this new knowledge prior to planning those processing and practicing, practicing activities. And during planning or those pre-conference sessions that administrators have with teachers, they are expected to show knowledge about their ELL's language proficiency levels. That way, they can determine appropriate scaffolds when they implement their lessons and enhance them. It is important to note that through our ongoing professional learning at the district office, the ESOL department can help prepare ESOL contacts to lead our schools toward developing and implementing these practices during common planning. One new addition to support school as well is a monthly newsletter called the Stellar Scoop. This is something you might have already been familiar with as part of my weekly highlights to the school board. It provides information on strategies that are best practices, misconceptions we might be noticing during our visits, and upcoming professional development with articles related so that we can grow as educators. We are excited about this new initiative and are looking forward to the development now of an ESOL website coming during the second semester to provide even more supports to our schools. So these are the three focus areas that wrap up my vision for the plan of curriculum. Helping schools progress monitor student group data, ensuring we're providing teachers with support during common planning in those four language domains and proficiency levels, and providing ongoing professional development, whether it be a PD the school has selected from our catalog or in collaboration with the ESOL contact to build their capacity. After establishing this cycle to its full implementation, my long-term goal is to also bring back the dual-language program to Lee County. When implemented with fidelity, the students benefit tremendously and outperform their peers across the board. Now let's move into some other ideas I have for the areas of ESOL, such as compliance, that falls under the meta consent decree, and parent engagement, which is equally as important. In the area of compliance, I am currently working with the budget department to take a look at how the weighted FTE allocations are being distributed to help the human capital at schools in order to meet compliance tasks in a timely manner. Currently, the ESOL contact position is only a supplemental position, which is making it really challenging for teachers that teach all day and then are asked to conduct meetings, test students, and do all the paperwork and filing that's necessary, and that's just compliance. And when we think about, we want them to also support with curriculum, it's just, it's an impossible task for them. In addition, there are currently only two district Spock positions supporting all 120 schools, including charters. From stakeholder input at APC, principal, and ESOL contact meetings, the need in this area is greater than two positions can support. Schools are wanting more in-person school visits to assist with the compliance task. I am in the process of updating and creating job descriptions that will assist in providing schools with more of that face-to-face support. The restructure in this area will increase from two ESOL compliance specialists to six. Three of them would be senior compliance specialists that would help with FTE, progress monitoring, training, and development. And the other three compliance specialists will be at the schools four days a week to provide that face-to-face support with testing and the auditing of the blue inserts that the stakeholders are requesting. That will now give each zone two dedicated compliance specialists from our office that would be able to assist them with these tasks. For the time being, we have created a monthly open lab work session for ESOL contacts to get more of that one-to-one, face-to-face support, and it's going pretty well. At the last session, we were able to support just over 20 ESOL contacts at one time on one day. At the beginning of the year, I held four stakeholder meetings with students, parents, faculty, and administrators. And at the roundtable for the parents, their desire to increase opportunities for them to be involved in their child's education was a high priority. I have written and submitted an immigrant grant to help with human capital efforts in this area. This is another job description that I am creating for this specific ESOL position. It would provide the district with two Spock positions that would work with speaking Spanish and/or Haitian Creole to help communicate with families. They will be responsible for working with schools in the community to provide assistance and support these families transitioning from another country. We will also be purchasing asynchronous technology to provide on-demand translations at school and community events as requested in the targeted languages of Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Portuguese. For the time being, the ESOL department has and will continue to host parent engagement institutes throughout the year to help support them both virtually and face-to-face. At our first institute, we had around 180 families join us via Teams, and they were very appreciative of that opportunity. A new initiative our department has taken over is Language Line Solution Services. Language Line is a resource all our schools and district departments have started to implement into their practice for meetings and making phone calls home. This helps to allow hundreds of languages and dialects for our families and keeps our ESOL paraprofessionals in the, in the classroom supporting instruction. They can have a live interpreter over the phone or through video conferencing. The budget line for this resource is $50,000 through general funds, with the first release of funds being $25,000. As you can see by the data on the slide, our schools and district departments are utilizing this resource to communicate with families and eliminate language as a barrier. The languages that have been requested so far are Spanish, Portuguese, Portuguese Brazilian, Vietnamese, Haitian Creole, Czech, Ukrainian, Russian, Romanian, Mandarin, Bengali, and French. We are excited by the usage, and as we continue to train staff, we know that this will increase. Thank you for your time today. My name is Solida Sarmiento, and here is my email address in case you need to contact me directly. I also want to take this opportunity to introduce some stellar educators that are part of my wonderful team, and they're on this journey with me to help build the capacity at the schools. So the first up is Dr. Carlos Negron, who is our ELL coordinator. He's the only other administrator I have on my team with me, and is really helping to oversee and do an overhaul of our professional development that we're doing with schools. And he's also leading the close-up initiative for our students. I have two Spock compliance specialists that I had mentioned, so if they can stand, so we can be recognized as well. That's Rosario and Cindya, who work on supporting over 60 schools apiece in the area of compliance. And then the rest of my team, if they can stand. These are my ESOL specialists who support schools in developing the action plan on the three areas of focus and conduct school support visits four days a week. Thank you. And lastly, my new administrative assistant slash bookkeeper slash my sanity, Anna Teresa. She helps manage that Language Line Solution Services, and she provides translations herself in four languages. And she helps with the processing and keeping me fiscally responsible, as I was taught, for my Title III grant that we have to manage. So thank you, Anna. Without this team, my vision would not be possible. So I will open the floor to the superintendent for comments and the school board discussion at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmiento. We appreciate the efforts that you've done and started to create in such a short period of time. I think it's really important for our board to understand, and I appreciate you providing them and the public the information that ELL and ESOL numbers are a moving target. As students become more proficient, they graduate out of the program, they become a different scoring bucket. And you tend to be left with newcomers and other people just moving to the country. So it's a difficult metric with which to move, but there is, there is room to grow. Certainly to at least the state average and certainly above it, and I know that's your goal and expectation. I think the other piece that I would just like to add is, as Sarmiento mentioned, PM 1 data and the fact that they were 3%. I would want to remind everybody in the public that when you take PM 1, you're taking an exam for the entire year of the grade that you're already in. So when you take that in September, October, you're taking it like you're all the way in May. So you're taking the entire year's worth of curriculum content, and you're saying, "How proficient are you with everything?", some of which hasn't been taught to you yet. So I just think those are important factors to keep in mind. But I do appreciate the hard numbers, and thank you again for the support you've provided to me regarding monolingual. We have to see everybody who speaks two languages or anybody with an accent as a decided advantage in our community and in our workplace. Because most people with an accent speak at least one more language than I do. And I can't tell you how valuable it is for those individuals. And one thing I don't think I heard you mention was, one of the things that I know isn't a long-term plan is seals of biliteracy upon graduation, where students who graduate fluent in both languages receive an additional seal at the time of graduation, which makes them more competitive in the collegiate and career market. So thank you for everything you are doing to your team. I'm just going to go back to Challenger Middle. Your superintendent missed an amazing opportunity the other night talking about how important it is to recognize educators, support professionals, and members of this district. And sometimes it's as little as being introduced and hearing applause. Hopefully, this restores a little bit of your faith that we believe each and every day, and this board does as well, that you have great purpose and impact. And thank you for what you do. It may seem like a dauntless task and lots of work, and it is. But the work you do is changing lives, and I think the board and myself want to just again say thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of the students in Lee County. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
First, I'd just like to say welcome and thank you for your vision. As I go through, and I'm sure many of us go through the district, we see how, sometimes how difficult it is when you're in the classrooms and you see that the child walking up with their- their, their Google translator, you know, trying to figure out what they're saying. And I'm always impressed when you have the teacher there, and then you have the other students who come up to try to assist as well in what has taken place there. And I know, for instance, because you mentioned those languages, someone told me the other day that someone just came in, and I cannot remember what country they came in, but what do we do when that language is not anything that any of us know? How do we then, do we go to the Google or do we go to this, this language line to then start? I'm just always impressed on how do we teach that child to, to be able to communicate? So I, I don't know, what is the?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a loaded question, just because what we need is for our teachers to be trained on how to plan the lessons, like I was showing you on that one example with the language proficiency levels and how the teacher meticulously, they took time during planning to decide what is a student able to do at a level one, because that student looks very different than what a student is able to do at a level six. And it really starts there. It starts with the planning process of what strategies am I going to use when I teach this lesson? What supports am I going to put in place, and what are those scaffolds? So it's a lot we're asking teachers to do, but by law, they, they must be doing this. Parents send their students to school here to learn English. So when our teachers or staff members are teaching them the content in their home language, that is doing a disservice to the student, then they're not learning English, and then they're not going to be performing well on the assessment. It is a struggle for the student at first. It's going to be a struggle, just like we speak English, we're strong readers, right? But if we move to France, that doesn't mean you don't know how to read anymore, that you've lost all your reading skills. It just means you don't know that language, and it's going to take you time to develop language. It takes three to five years to really get a solid foundation when you're learning a new language. So we need to give the students time to go through that process, that productive struggle with the supports that the teacher needs to provide in the classroom, and they'll get there. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, and then I just have another, well, I really want to thank all of you, because I know how difficult it is and the size of our district and the amount of students that we have. Do we have, and all your numbers, so thank you for that as well. Is there a certain age, is there more elementary that we see coming in here?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I definitely can provide that breakdown by where those numbers are.
Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate all of you.
Ms. Patrica?
So I had a conversation with Dr. Bernier the other day about having met someone that works for the district, and the meeting sort of left me cold. This is the opposite. Holy cow. I am blown away by your background, the experience that you bring to the position, your personal story, and just the amount of detail you brought. I know that you're bringing a lot to us in these meetings, Dr. Bernier, but I'm exhausted after this presentation.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's a good thing. That's a compliment. I am really overwhelmed for our teachers, because I know this is a huge change, and I'm a little concerned about that, just how to, I, I'm overwhelmed thinking, thinking about it, and they're the professionals with the training, so I'm just, I'm really overwhelmed. Let me jump into some questions if I may. Slide nine shows me fast testing for grades three through eight. For example, our ELLs were at 30% in the spring of 2023, and our non-ELLs were at 59%. When you move to the next slide, I see for algebra and geometry, but I only see ELLs. So that's telling me that in the spring of 2023, 15.3% of our ELLs passed, yes?
Yes.
And 13.9% passed. That's a, that's a sort of a data point without context, because I don't see what our non-ELLs did on that. So if, and there's a few slides where that's the case. I think the next several slides coming up, don't show me our non-ELLs.
Okay.
So if I could see that without requiring too, too much work on your part, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
The other thing is the 20,000-ish, 20,582 ELLs that we had at the beginning of this year versus, and I just saw it on, on your desk, I think the number was 389 Language Line calls? To me, that's way too low.
Well, if I can.
Please.
Language Line is new to, to everyone in the district, so at this next principals and APC meetings, it's gone out as a memo, but at this next meeting, I am presenting to the principals and APCs to reiterate that we do have this, this service. We want them using it. And I was pleasantly surprised by the numbers, because people were hesitant at first, how do I use this? How do I get a code? We've gone ahead and also put it as an app on Launchpad, so now it's even easier than having to use your own personal device. So now that's there as well, too. We've increased the limit, because they only gave us a certain amount of activation codes, and we reached that limit, so then they doubled it and increased it. So it's get, the, the message and the word is getting out there, so I know it will increase. It's just a matter of advertising it, if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And my last question is sort of like a general one. You said it takes three to five years to really, really understand a new language. And it's my understanding that the state gives our kids three years. Once they're identified as an ELL, right?
Yes.
They get three years before they have to take the test?
No, they take the test every year. After they reach that third year, that's when we begin reevaluating them, and we have to have a yearly meeting after, after the anniversary of three years. How is the student doing? That's what we call those extension of instruction meetings. Should they remain in the program? If they're going to remain in the program, what supports are we going to be putting into place? Do they need to go through MTSS? Like what is going on with the student? And that's where some of that time, when we talk about the ESOL contact role, they need the time to be able to have these meaningful meetings with the parents and the people at the school that are making a decision about a child and not just check a box because it was compliance. If we're not really looking at the child, every single child that we're having these meetings for, and trying to make the best interventions or decisions about them, we're going to continue to see the cycle that we're in. We have students that have been in the ESOL program more than six years. There are students that have been in the ESOL program since kindergarten, and they're sitting in high school classes. That should not be the case. One, we don't receive any more funding for them, and two, there's got to be something else going on. Why are you still in the ESOL program? It, it can't be language at that point. There might be something else going on that we need to look at and consider. So our team, we've talked about more training that our ESOL contacts need, specifically around those extension of instruction meetings, and what those really look like, the purpose for them, and what should be taking place at those meetings, so that we can put supports in place for these kids, so that they don't end up, an 11th grader that's been in ESOL since first grade, because we have lots of cases like that.
Okay. All right, I'll step back from my questions for now and just say not only welcome to Lee County, but thank you for being here.
Thank you. And then just to address Dr. Bernier's comment about the seal of biliteracy, that is part of that immigrant grant that, it should be coming to the board. Hopefully, it's on the November 21st agenda for your guys' approval. So I'm purchasing, they're called stamp-for-us licenses through advance assessments, and so with that licenses, it gives our students at the high school level an alternative path to get the seal of biliteracy. Because if they're coming from another country, let's say in 10th grade or 11th grade, they would not be able to have the four years of that consecutive language in order to obtain that seal of biliteracy. But most often than not, they might already be becoming literate, hopefully, in the language that they're coming from, that they attended school, and this is an opportunity to give those students that same access to that accolade during graduations, that they also can obtain that seal of biliteracy when they get their high school diploma. So that is part of that grant, and we are working on, working on developing a memo for that, to talk to schools about it in a presentation, so that we can test students in the spring. So that is coming, Dr. Bernier, just to give you an update on that.
Additional questions? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I don't have any questions. I just share the sentiment. Dr. Bernier has referred to this as a refresh. It's not a refresh. It's a jump shift to a whole nother level. I had, as Ms. Patrica said, I had no idea how complex the expectations were, how much work was required by staff. This is, thank you, again, it's, thank you for choosing us. We really appreciate you coming, and I appreciate the work you all are doing. I just, I had no idea. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chair, and good to see you again, Director Sarmiento. And thank you a while back for giving me the tour department and meeting some of your amazing staff, and I really appreciate this presentation. Just to clarify something, and I remember we had talked about this when we met, kind of piggybacking off Board Member Jordan, for Language Line, it's not used to translate during classroom instruction, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
This is to help open that communication between home and the school.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it's clarified. The other thing is, you know, and I'm sure, you know, my fellow board members have gotten these emails, I know there's been some apprehension from teachers in the past of dealing with ELL and stuff, so I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping you're getting some positive feedback and buy-in with this, so, and hope that will continue with that. So I think that will help a lot with it.
It's definitely going to be a culture shift, as you said. This is a heavy lift. Just to be transparent and honest, some schools are more welcoming and receptive to the change than others. We still have schools that have not met with their ESOL specialists, and we're in the second nine weeks to develop a plan. And outside of harassing them and just showing up at their school and asking for a meeting, which I ask them not to do, I'm like, you've already contacted multiple, like, you can't do anymore. Like, what more can you do besides like, show up at their, their door and like, mandate a meeting? So it's going to take time, and so what I like to tell them is that your work will speak for itself, and it'll spread. And we had, that just happened not too long ago, where a principal shared about a presentation that we had done at a school, and she was very excited about it, and had shared that with a colleague, another principal, and now that principal has reached out to us, and that was one that had not previously interacted with us. So that's why I just say work with the willing at the moment, and then that'll start to make waves and trickle down, because change takes time, change is uncomfortable, and what's needed for the work here in the ESOL department is transformative change, and fast, but we'll get there, hopefully.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought up kind of what we talked about before. Thank you so much.
Ms. Jordan?
I just have a question regarding what your statement you just made. How are we not being consistent throughout the district at all the schools? Is it an option? I mean, they should not be not, having to knock on doors. If we have a job to, to do, why are we?
We are.
I'm trying to understand that one.
We are. I think the question is valid, and I think what Ms. Sarmiento is saying, that they have begun with the coalition of the willing who have responded immediately. When you look at the size of the team and the number of schools we have to visit, it's an investment of time right now in those school buildings that, that are choosing to belong to this process, but rest assured, all of them will come through this process, all of them will have a plan. But the goal first is to begin to work once people realize, in the case that she just provided, that, wow, this was really good for us. When principals start to talk to principals, it builds a sense of desire to get involved in the program as well, but we will always ensure the compliance with state law, meta consent decree, and the other regulations that we're expected to follow.
Thank you.
And I will say the majority, there's only like 16 schools that have not yet jumped on board with us, and some of those are charter schools. So when you think about it as a whole, the number is not that, is not that high.
Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Giovinelli.
Yeah, I just, I look out at this group, and I think of the number of schools that we have, and I want to say to my colleagues at the board, where are our priorities in terms of budgeting? Why do we need to get a grant in order to get Ms. Sarmiento? Did I say it right?
Yes.
The help that she needs. So as we come up and we think about budgeting, I look at, Dr. Desmore is out there, I look at Dr. Bernier, and I just challenge the board, where are our priorities, and why, why don't we have double the number of people sitting out there if this is in fact, and I believe it is, the challenge that we all understand that it is?
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Bernier?
I would weigh in on that to say you've already provided us the opportunity to direct budgetary services. By what you've done with the work with the strategic plan, and specifically outlining the work and the expectations, the measurements, ELL is now a measured piece on our scorecard. So in November and December, Dr. Desmore and myself, the other chiefs, we've already had a conversation of before we get into the, I'm sorry, the more nitty-gritty budget work of the late winter, early spring, we want to come in together in November and December, look at the strategic plan and say, where do we need to look at the funding we're going to receive? Where are our holes? Where can we get better? Rather than bringing a few of my favorite things to the budgetary process, really utilizing the strategic plan as a tool to look at situations like this, ESE is another area where we need additional people for compliance and support. So that is already part of, in a sense, a revised initial process to the budgetary process, but eventually will come down to the aspect, as it has in the past, of making decisions. But now we have a, now we have a tool to utilize to make sure we're making those decisions in the proper way.
Questions? Ms. Giovinelli?
So I do have a question. You, did you, what county did you just come from? Was it Orange?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, and you had 60?
We were a team of 50.
Oh, it's a team of 50.
Mm-hmm. So there was nine administrators, 19 ESOL specialists, 12 program coordinators that were the Spalk positions that would help with the compliance piece. The compliance had three administrators. I don't have an administrator right now that helps me monitor compliance. That's me. Yeah, so it was, it was a bigger team.
Right, and how many do you have now?
Total, including me and my assistant, there are 17 of us.
17. So I just wanted to welcome you, and welcome you, and thank you for the work you're doing or continuing to do, and the work that you're going to do. It's exciting, and it is, I, I can't even speak actually, because it's a lot, I can see that. And then the presentation was awesome, and thank you so much for that. And that was just really my question, it was that, to bring up the fact of where you came from, and, and that was for only 30,000 students. We have 18,000 students, so we still have more than half of that, and you had?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
More than half of, you know, twice as big.
Some of the positions I'm trying to buy through that immigrant grant, so we had a team over there that we call parent liaisons, so they were the ones that were in the communities and doing all that translation, support work, and community outreach. So those would be those two positions I'm trying to purchase through the immigrant grant. So you'll see hopefully a job description in the near future for that, and so that I can hire for those two. And I have reclassified one position that Dr. Bernier approved, so that I can hire at least a third person for the two compliance specialists that you see. So we are in the process of interviewing for that position and hopefully filling soon. We had found a candidate, and she declined the position because of the pay. So I'm hoping this next round of interviews, somebody is a good candidate and will accept the position.
Well, just thank you for your work, and thank you for your work. So thank you.
Other questions? I just want to say, just in round numbers, this, the English, I mean, the language learners there, just like 20% of our students, and that's a, that's a huge chunk. I mean, we see 20,000, I mean, that's 20%, and that affects everything from the grades and of everybody for the whole school district and everything else. So you, I'm sure you have, like I said before, with the other ones, you have our support. I have no doubt about it. We're going to get you up and running, and we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. I see everybody sort of looking. We're gonna take a five-minute break, I see everybody sort of looking.
All right, it's, we're resuming the meeting, it's 2:35 PM. Next is our presentation on guest teachers' services proposals. Dr. Bernier, would you like to?
I would, I would, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'd like to again introduce Mr. Robert Dotig, the Executive Director of Human Resources, and Ms. Johanna Tortosa-Ersley, who is the coordinator of certain projects within the Human Resource Division, this being one of hers. As you will recall, this goes back all the way prior to, actually, some of the board members even coming to the board. There's some discussions on my early arrival to the school district of Lee County about the potential to outsource. We held up on doing anything until the new board was seated, and then in the late fall, the late winter, early spring, we started to have some discussions about this type of proposal, and we tabled it. We came back to you recently, and I want to just give credit where credit is due, and this may be part of the presentation, but the communication plan that we began when we first met with all of you in one-on-ones, we provided you a great deal of information on Kelly Services, what it was, what it wasn't, but we also shared with you a communication plan, and I want you to know where we are. We started the first base in communication with board members back on 9/26. That's when we first met with everybody, we provided everybody a folder of information. Then again, on 10/5, we met with district and school-based administrators to tell them and talk with them about the process. Then we actually, through conversation with all of you in your one-on-ones, we added an actual physical meeting in communication with our guest teachers, and additionally bringing Kelly Services to that same meeting, so there could be an interaction. We had about less than 100 people show up, between 70 and 100 people show up to that meeting as guest teachers, and they were pretty equally divided. What you have in front of you potentially for consideration on November 7th is a privatization of our substitute pool. We're going to raise salaries for those individuals to make them competitive regionally, and then we're going to allow, the plan here is to allow company to do the work, to recruit, do this full-time, and potentially improve our fill rate, which is around, hovers around 50%, and move it to at least 80, hopefully 85%, which is what they've been able to do in districts across the state. We then, after we did that communication with the guest teachers, we then moved into, on 10/11 and 10/18, conversations with TALK and Spalk. We wanted to be very clear with our unions that we were not going to be in any way, shape, or form privatizing any other positions. As you know, substitutes neither are a union nor technically our employees, but, you know, we wanted to be sure that our unions were, had been communicated as well. Today is the board workshop that we had promised we would do, and then there will be a board meeting on 11/7 where this is currently an agenda item. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dotig, and, and let him begin the process of having the conversation with you and covering the PowerPoint presentation.
Ms. Patrica, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, please. So you said you met with 100 of a population of how many, please?
The substitute pool regularly active is in the 700 range, I think 780 was the last number, then Mrs. Erzley, but all of the substitutes were communicated with, post that meeting, we just felt it was best to offer a public face-to-face interaction with them prior to emailing them and notifying them of this process.
All right.
So thank you, Superintendent Bernier. As we've discussed, our guest teacher pool is at 735 guest teachers, and as we described for you in our one-on-one meetings, the ideal pool size for a district of our size is in excess of 1,700 guest teachers. Also, as the graph on the left indicates here, we have not kept pace with guest teacher hires. In April of 2023, as you can see, we hired only four new guest teachers in that month. This slide, the next slide, indicates the average yearly cost of guest teachers for the district. This does not include FICA and Medicare for guest teachers. So after extensive research and a, essentially a two-year process, the district has chosen Kelly Services, specifically Kelly Education, which is a subsidiary of Kelly Services, as our vendor of choice to perform the guest teacher administrative and management functions for the district. This slide outlines their experience in this space, and I would point out the final bullet, which indicates that Kelly is in over 1,100 school districts nationwide. Indicated here are the sister districts in Florida where Kelly is providing guest teacher services. The Miami-Dade partnership just began, well, last month, in October. Here you see the fill rates in the sister districts and our current fill rate in Lee County. We are filling 57% of our teacher absences with guest teachers. The Kelly districts are all over 80%, and I will just tell you, I looked before we came in today, we have 190 teacher absences not filled in Lee County, and that is about average on a daily basis. The terms of the agreement with Kelly provide them with a 27.5% markup on the daily rate for a guest teacher. However, even with the markup on a rate of, an average rate of 115.28 cents a day, we stand to benefit by using Kelly Services due to the lack of hard and soft costs associated with employing guest teachers that the district will no longer have. In addition to the foregoing information, these are the other significant ways in which the district will benefit from the partnership with Kelly Education. Kelly also offers benefits to employees and other perks to keep them engaged in providing services to the district. Kelly's level of expertise and resources to effectively manage and maintain fill rates, along with their ability to source qualified guest teachers, eliminates time our schools will spend working to fill classrooms. For the purposes of transparency, this slide indicates the estimated cost of the district's partnership with Kelly. Keep in mind, costs will vary according to the fill rate percentage. The district pays Kelly for filling vacancies. Should Kelly increase our fill rates, which we are hopeful they will, the cost will increase. Our goal is to provide our students with instruction from a qualified teacher to ensure minimal disruption to the learning environment. Including the partnership with Kelly, we are proposing, in addition to the partnership with Kelly, we are proposing an increase to the daily rate for guest teachers. The daily rate upon approval of the agenda item will increase significantly in January of 2024, when we plan to implement the Kelly Services process. And I know the colors are not great on that slide, but, so, upon board approval, I'll just give you a little bit of an outline of what will happen. The district will begin, of course, working with Kelly. There will be a planning meeting, a kickoff meeting, there'll be an exchange of data, of course, regarding our guest teachers. We will have a significant amount of communication, including a follow-up meeting with our guest teachers in person if they choose to come. We will have the transition, they will then begin their recruiting, and they will provide our guest teachers with training, and we hope to go live in the second semester, I'm sorry, in the beginning of January, the second semester of the school year. So I just want to, before I turn it over to the superintendent, this has been a long, arduous process, and it's important for me to thank the superintendent, because he's supported this initiative from day one of his superintendency, so thank you, Dr. Bernier. Thank you to Johanna for all of her hard work on the project, and others in HR, and ultimately, in anticipation of your support, I thank the board for listening and supporting something that will hopefully move the district forward in an area where we desperately need it. So, thank you.
Members of the board, first of all, thank you to Mrs. Erzley. She spent significant time with me as we worked through this process, along with Mr. Dotig, helping me to understand, consistently working with another company as well. There are basically two companies within the state of Florida that do this, one has a more proven track record than the other, and that's where the team felt that recommendation to work with Kelly, specifically Kelly Educational Services, was the right, right approach. I want to begin by setting the stage for your discussion around this aspect. As a former principal, classroom coverage was always paramount. Every time that I had a situation where I walked into the building and talked to my, what we had in our school building was a permanent substitute, they were a member of the Spalk Union, if you will, their job was to be a substitute in our school building every day, but really what they organized was substitutes. They made sure classrooms were covered, keys were handed out, lessons, plans were shared, and individuals escorted or brought to the right classroom so they could do their work on behalf of a teacher who was absent for the day. Every time you don't have a substitute in a classroom, it creates angst at the very best, and chaos at the very worst, to get that classroom covered, to ensure that our students have- have the appropriate coverage. There are organizations in this community and in this state and in this nation that do this work. And in our one-on-ones, I encouraged us to think of the larger picture of what a public education system is good at and what we're not good at. And what we're good at is educating kids, working on ESAL compliance, getting sure our ELL students and our gifted students and our ESE students, and really working a strategic plan to continue to move forward. There are organizations that help companies, which we are a very large corporation, support operational issues when they occur. IBM, Microsoft, Google do not go out and secure temporary employees, house them, and then wait to employ them based upon an engineer or a custodian or somebody being absent. They worked with temporary services to secure temporary employees to do that work. This will also free up, with the human resource presentation coming to you next, in the next several, in the next two weeks, I believe, you will get additional information and how we can better utilize some of the talent that we have in the recruitment of teachers and the recruitment of other full-time employees while we can employ another organization to help and support us. I think it's important for the community of substitutes to know, this has been explained to them and to all of you, but to the public, I think it's important that you know that nobody has to reapply. This transfer process for a substitute is seamless. They move from becoming a, that's why we're giving Kelly the lead time between now and January, in order to get their, if you approve, to get the system up and running. This will allow our substitutes to transfer over to the new company. They do not have to reapply, they do not have to re-fingerprint, they just, they are seamlessly brought over because they've already cleared all those background checks. Kelly then can begin to recruit, which it's already begun to do across the entire state. They'll recruit additional people. They will also open up to other substitute pools that they work with to see whether any additional people are available, and they will begin to work to bolster the number of subs. For our teachers and our principals, as a former principal, and permit me, but we have substitutes that love to work in certain buildings. They just want to work at School X or School Y. They can still do that in this system. Instead of calling into an analog system and tracking a telephone message, there's an online interface with a website where a substitute can say, "I want to work here," and they can see the opening, and they can click on their favorite school and their favorite teacher, and they can absorb a job and be assigned to that school building. That's the way Kelly will tell you it works, and it works that way. But the other way that it works is teachers are very resourceful. Thank you, Ms. Fleming, for nodding your head. They're very resourceful, and if they have a favorite substitute and they know they're going to be out, they will call that favorite substitute and they will say, "I'm getting ready to post on Kelly Services that I'm going to be out next Thursday and Friday." That substitute will be ready for when that job posts, to hit enter and absorb the job. So in a sense, it's a win-win. It's a win-win because our teachers and faculty in schools will still be able to access their same substitutes. Our substitutes will be working with a reputable company that also helps support them full-time. Benefits are available to them. I want to be clear, they would have to pay for their benefits, they're not given to them. But benefits are available to them, which we do not have. And additionally, as part of this, we're trying to raise the hourly salaries to a point where we can be competitive in the other market. The board will continue to control the salary of a substitute. Kelly pays them what we decide they should be paid. So if at a future date you wanted to raise substitute pay, you could. And Kelly would then comply with the money that we pay to them to ensure the wages are taken. Rob kind of breezed over a slide when he talked about some of the hidden costs. But you have hidden costs in payroll, you have hidden costs in HR where we have to bring these people on, we have to vet them, we have to make sure they fingerprint, we have to background check them, we have to pay them. All of those functions shift over to Kelly Services, and we should be allowed to utilize those individuals in payroll, HR, and other impacted areas to do the work to find the 200 teachers that we're still looking for as well. I could go on and on, I don't want to, because you've already sat through a number of presentations, but I wanted to try to hit the highlights of this particular program. And we stand ready to answer any questions or provide any additional commentary you may need to support a decision on November 7th.
All right. Questions? Okay, Ms. Jada Fleming?
Thank you. Thank you for the hard work. I do support the services. I know we've talked about that a lot in our one-on-one. We, and I do know that it comes at a cost to the district, but we have to do something. We can't keep doing the same thing we're doing. If you go back to Slide 5, where it shows our district compared to the others, you know, like I said, we have to try something. And I know that the superintendent, you kind of touched on it, I had, I was going to ask you about the seamless transition, and I think that's what the fear for a lot of our guest teachers, you know, they're going to have a lot of those questions. And, you know, I think it's fair for us to ask and make sure that they are aware that it should be a seamless transition. Are there any, are there any extra trainings or continuing ed or anything like that outside of the fingerprinting, outside of that? Are there any trainings or certifications they're going to have to go through once they are a part of Kelly Services?
Kelly does require them to do an initial two-hour paid training session, so they are paid for that.
Okay.
Yep.
And like I said, we've got to try something. I hear so often when we are at, when I'm at schools, the weight and the burden that our teachers already feel, and then when they get five to 10 sometimes in our elementary school classrooms, extra students, and they will tell you, it isn't, it is not the fact that they're getting these extra kids, it's just extra things on their plate. We just had a great presentation from our ELL department. I mean, think about all of the things that are coming on top of our teachers, and then they get another six to 10 kids in a classroom. And sometimes, you know, and I know that a lot of middle school and high school teachers are giving up planning periods to cover classrooms too, so that's something to be said. But, you know, just throwing it out there, if we don't see benefits in this program and we're giving it a try, are we in a contract with them for a certain period of time? And I did, and my second part of that question is, it said on Slide, it talked about, on Slide 8, should Kelly Services get the district to a 90% fill rate, cost will increase. Does that, is that, is that cost, do we know that cost?
What Mr. Dotick is referring to there is cost will increase because our fill rate will be higher. So the number of people we're paying $20 an hour will increase, so we'll know our costs will go up. That is an area of which, when speaking with budget and working with budget and finance to do this proposal and make sure we could do it, that's a cost we can absorb. Because the cost that we don't see in this proposal, Ms. Fleming, is what you're describing of what goes on in our school buildings. When either you have to, you have to leave your planning period and go cover, or you have to absorb children into your classroom. So I do want to be clear on that. In terms of out, all of our contracts include out clauses, both for the provider and ourselves, and our attorney assures that we put those in in order to protect the district investment.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks again for all your efforts here.
Welcome. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. And piggybacking off, I agree with what Ms. Langford Fleming said, especially with how difficult things are now. I have a, Mr. Dotick, I think I may have asked this last time, do we have any data for the other districts, what their rate was before they took on Kelly Services? That's available or accessible?
Yeah, I don't want to answer that, right?
Okay.
I don't have that with me if we have that, yes.
Okay, if that's available.
If we do, I'll share that with you.
Thank you.
I can answer the question about Orange County. I was a principal at the time. Our average fill rate hovered around 67%, and it went to over 80.
Okay.
It didn't go over 80 in the first year, but it was 80 within the subsequent years of the contract.
It was what, at the beginning?
67.
Thank you.
On or about, don't hold me to one or two plus or minus points.
Okay. I won't. Thank you, Mr. Dotick. Other question for this, and it kind of goes back to one of Ms. Langford Fleming's question, the data on this, to see if it's succeeding, the problem is it's going to be a little bit of the chicken or the egg, because it's, you know, there's a salary increase at the same time. So is it going to be a salary increase, is it Kelly, is it going to be both? So when we're looking at how the success of this is, either way, I mean, if it's success, that's great, but that's going to be a little bit obviously difficult for us to analyze based on that.
It's true.
And the third thing I have just to comment on is, as I said, I think this is necessary, but also to make sure if we do move forward with this, is communication on this, especially throughout the district.
Absolutely.
One of the issues we've had throughout the district with some of these programs is communication, communication, communication. We have some great things going on, but it doesn't translate out necessarily to some of the employees of the community, so.
Yeah, and I'll just assure you, following, hopefully, the approval on next Tuesday, that Johanna and I will be meeting with guest teachers and principals and assistant principals the month of November and December, in anticipation of all of this, so, along with Kelly's folks.
Right. To the board's question regarding ongoing communication, as I said, we are in stage five of a communication plan, which included this workshop today. The board would be scheduled to vote on 11/7. Beginning on 11/8, a new communication plan from now until transition actually goes into effect, which shifts a little bit from simply informing that this is happening to start talking about how the transition works and what to do in order to make it as seamless as possible. I do want to thank Mr. Dotick and Ms. Erzly, really in particular, for doing the face-to-face meetings. While we're not getting 700 people at a meeting, they're at least reaching out and asking those individuals to come in before sending out communication that can always be, seem a little cold and harsh when it's sent via email, if that's the first time you're hearing about someone making a change that impacts you and the way you choose to help pay some of your bills. So I appreciate the work they've put into really being physically present. And again, the feedback from the original source, and I'll, Johanna, I'll answer if she want, if she wants to add. But it was about a 50-50 split. If you think back to our one-on-ones, I told you there could be some angst about this because people would feel like they're being removed from the family. They're not being removed from the family, the services with which employ them are, but we love our guest teachers. We will continue to have a guest teacher program, we will continue to recognize a guest teacher of the year, we will continue to do those things. And to Mr. Dotick's point about Kelly, Kelly does a two-hour paid training to get them onboard with Kelly's expectations, because there are expectations, and anytime you have a new employer, there's required training, but they do pay them to do that training. So, thank you. Johanna, if you had anything to add about the face-to-face meeting?
You know, I just want to say, they were split, and I think a lot of it was just misconceptions about their role here in the district. A lot of them were under the impression that they were full-time employees, when in fact they're casual, then the fear of transitioning. But I offered the opportunity for anyone to give me a call, answer any questions that they might have, and that still stands true today. Anyone's available or free to call me, email me with any questions.
That answers my questions. Thank you both for your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So I want to start by saying, Ms. Erzly, that I'm really happy to see you in a position where your skill set is being utilized to its fullest potential and that it's being appreciated, because I certainly appreciate what you do. Slide 3, please. I said out loud, and I don't know if anybody heard me, why not? The bottom, it says FICA and Medicare are not included. I said out loud, why not? That's not like a real, without FICA and Medicare included...
Yeah. I was looking for Dr. Desmores back in the, she's left the room, so.
So the report that I received came from Kelly, and this is Kelly Letcher in our Budget Department, and this was the breakdown that I received. And it did not include the FICA, but I was told that that would be an additional 30%.
So the cost for the district is FICA, Medicare, and federal withholding, right? So wouldn't that be part of the cost we should be considering and comparing?
Yes.
So can we?
So there would be an additional 30% to the end of these numbers.
Okay.
And I can include that for you.
If you wouldn't mind, that would be great, because you don't want me doing math?
No.
Unless, unless something is, does the math for me automatically. That's the first thing. The second thing is, as I move down to Slide 8, what, I think I heard Mrs. Langford Fleming indicate or ask this question, so if we are at a fill rate of 90%, what is that cost? Like, what is that number?
That's a difficult number to come up with, Ms. Patrica, because it depends upon what 90% represents. And I don't mean to play a numbers game with you, but I mean, it really does matter. If we're averaging 300 substitutes a day, then that cost would be 90% of 300. If for some reason, through this program and through our wellness programs and other things, teachers are less absent, maybe because of the TALC, if the TALC ratifies their agreement and we're able to provide them the additional dollars that you were so generous in providing to the educators, maybe their attendance gets better, and we're only missing 100 teachers a day, then that 90% would be 90, and it would, it's less. We're just saying, we want you to be aware that as it rises from 57% and rises to 80, 90, or above, then there's just going to be additional costs based upon that fill rate unless absences go down.
Understood.
So it's a tricky answer.
I understand. It's helpful for me to have a number as opposed to a percentage. So if we could talk about what 90% is based on whatever number you use to come up with the 57% fill rate, right? So that would be comparing apples to apples. And then eliminating the need for class coverage, I thought that ESER was covering that, and now that we don't have ESER, we're no longer covering that?
That's correct.
So how is that real savings?
It's not exactly correct. So let's begin with the first question first. So what I think I hear you saying is, if we know we're only covering 57%, I don't want to do math publicly either, that would leave 33%. There's a number associated with that.
Correct.
So if we added, based upon an average of the number of teachers out per day, if we got the fill rate to 90%, we should be able to calculate a figure of what that would cost us, I think is what the board is asking for. Is that enough direction? Thank you.
That's exactly what I'm asking for, thank you.
So the second piece of that, because I was doing math, spoke to the idea of, and I apologize.
ESER. So I thought ESER gave us the money for class coverage, but we're no longer paying for that.
It's not that we're no longer paying, we set aside a specific amount in the ESER dollars prior to my arrival, and when that account was depleted, we had a requirement to inform the union that we no longer had the dollars within ESER to do it. We have done that, we have reverted back to the former class coverage procedures, which I will let Mr. Dotick, if you want that explanation to continue to explain.
Basically, teachers can only, are only being paid for covering classes during their planning time now.
Right.
As opposed to the way it was structured previously. And in elementary, they're taking students, like Ms. Langford Fleming described, a certain number of students from a class where a teacher is absent, and that's divided up using a formula, different than the class coverage language we had in the previous TALC contract. We're back to the language before COVID.
So I guess, I guess my point is, eliminating the need for class coverage doesn't provide us with any savings, any monetary savings, right?
Well, it does not provide us with any monetary savings per se, but what it does provide us with savings to the health and stress levels in other people of our schools, if subs in classrooms are not, if classrooms aren't covered and subs are not available.
No, I get that, and I support that, and I believe that, you know, class coverage is not a good thing to do for teachers, especially if we're not paying them for it. It's just the context in which it was presented, this is about transparency, the context in which it was presented indicated that there would be some savings to the district for not having to pay for class coverage. So I just wanted to be clear that there's no savings, but it probably will increase retention, which will ultimately lead to savings, right? Makes sense? That's it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Additional comments? Go ahead, Ms. Jada Van Alley.
Oh, she's going to go.
Ms. Jordan will be next.
Well, and I had a lot of questions, and I think y'all saw them, and some of this has answered that. A couple questions that, I'll be honest, I was, I'm a little disappointed, because I thought that the HR consultant might be here that we pay. I would, I was curious what her recommendation was on this, I mean, because we pay for a consultant, and I would be curious, her, you know, because that's her expertise, is HR. I would just be curious what she said. My other concern, my notes, you answered one of them regarding the vacancy, so it's 190 vacancies, is that, that's daily, right? Is that your thing?
It can be more than that, it can be less, that's today.
Oh, well, that's...
They're around, they're around... They're around, it's around 200 a day.
Okay.
Yes.
But what's our total vacancies, like, what, the total need, I should say?
Those are, that's 190 classes that don't have a teacher in them today. So other teachers are covering those classes, or?
Or substitutes.
No.
No.
No. Guest teachers are already accounted in that.
That's, that's what I was trying, okay, so how many guest teachers are we actually using?
I got you, okay.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I don't have that statistic in front of me.
Okay. Because I was just curious what our real need is and what we're unable, obviously, that's, I see the 190 that we're unable to fill.
Right.
So I get that. That was one of my questions.
We can welcome.
One of the other things is, I was curious if we ran this by the, like, the finance advisory to see what their input was. I mean, I think we just have to get everyone's buy-in. I know on the board, we had an email from a guest teacher with several questions, and they were, and they, they don't feel like the communication that went out was completely understood by other guest teachers, so a lot of, they felt like that's why the participation was low. And my concern is, you know, we do this and we don't see the success of it, and for the record, I know we need this, so I'm not, I've said that in here in one of my million questions, because I just had so many, because I know, I know we need it, we have to do something, because it's important that we do. I feel like we neglected the guest teacher role over many years. Mr., Mr., Marv, what was Marvin's last name?
Mr. Getz.
Getz, that Getz, would come and speak for them. He was such a great advocate for them, and speak about how we need to increase the pay. And we haven't done that in a while, and we weren't competitive. So I feel like those are some things that we have not quite acknowledged to, for the reason why we don't have the support that, in those areas. I'm concerned that our guest teachers will be kind of, I want to say the word, taken, and we don't get them back, and they go work somewhere else. That's my concern, because Kelly Services has other opportunities, that they're going to be loyal to that, to that person that they have. So that is my concern, is that we could lose them. I know that Cuyahoga County outsourced some jobs, and they lost those people, and they didn't get them back, and in their HR department, they quit doing that. So I'm just, I'm a little concerned over, you know, I know we've done things in the past, like we hired, what was it, they were from the Dominican Republic, the people from the other, like, so what happens to those people?
So that's a great question. It was one of the questions you provided in the questions you gave us. So the J-1 visa program, our full-time teachers.
Say they're not.
They come and they work for us full-time. They are not substitutes. So as long as they're in a classroom every day, there's no requirement for a substitute in their room. If they're absent, they are eligible to put their absence into the system, and Kelly Services will then fill that vacancy, fill that absent vacancy.
Thank you for that, because I really didn't remember that part about it. What was, I have one more question, and I'll let somebody else, let Ms. Jordan talk. Have we, have we actually thought about, like, just, could we contract to supplement our shortage and keep our guest teachers under us? Is that something that, and supplement our, the need, and kind of try it out to see if it works?
That was not a model we considered. It's not a model that either the competing company or Kelly Services would consider as well. This is, this is us actually moving the process over to another company. Our cost savings, because they've been asked, will really do revolve around some of the questions you also asked. For us to do this the way Kelly does it, we would have to build an additional recruitment department. We would need additional administrators, at least two, based upon what Kelly's giving us. That's in excess of, just the administrators alone are in the excess of $100,000 a year. We do believe this is the most cost-efficient way to go about our approach. And Ms. Giavennelli, we have some of those same concerns, but when you look at, when these programs have turned over to either one of these companies, they have been able to retain those substitutes, and they've been able to put them to work, and they've been able to provide additional substitutes for a school district. We have to give it time to work. If it doesn't work, that question has been asked, we do have, we do have, we do have a manner and means to step back from the contract. But I would tend to say to people publicly and to the public as well, I don't go into things expecting them not to work. We go into things expecting to work them until they do work. And I think Kelly Services and the other corporations that do this work want to be an effective partner. They want to have success here, like they've had in their other school districts, because their reputation is on the line, because they say they can do this work and do it better than a school district.
Thank you for that, because that was important for me to understand. Also, why, though, I know that you mentioned another, the other company, what made you pick Kelly over the other company? That was one of the questions, and that's it for me, thanks.
As you know, I'm not involved in the selection process. It's really important for the superintendent and the board to stay out of those processes for legal requirements, because then we become attached to legal lawsuits. That work was done by Mr. Dotick, the chiefs of this, of this executive team, and lots of phone calls to other districts comparing the services, comparing transition work, who was more successful with transition, and also comparing long-term relationship and how the two companies have performed over time. That's what I know to have been the decision-making process. I will turn it over to the two individuals representing that process if they have anything to add.
That's accurate. I will tell you that we met with both companies several times. They presented both to the Human Resources Division, and then, and also some members of the finance team, and then also to chiefs. They presented to us live, and amongst the issues or the deciding factors were the experience of Kelly Services, and frankly, the rate, the daily rate. So those were two primary factors that lent us in our direction. We do think highly of the other company and know that they're trying to create inroads in Florida, and we're anxious to see how that goes.
Thank you. One more question, I apologize. The, I don't know how many employees you have that's processing guest teachers at this point. This will free that, them up. How many is that? What's the, what?
There's one full-time employee in payroll and one full-time employee in HR that are dedicated solely to guest teachers.
So will that free them up to hire?
It'll free them up to do other things, yes.
Or hire more teachers if I'm.
Well, potentially, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want, Ms. Giavennelli, you asked for today's number. There are 270 vacancies filled today.
Okay, you're just trying to get an idea of what that is, not knowing, you know what I mean? So that was, I was curious.
Yep.
And so 270 today.
Yep, so there's 470 vacancies today.
470, and 190 of that is still not filled. Because I, I've seen the pictures of the students in the lunchroom or in the media or the, actually, different areas, sitting, being taught by, you know, in one room together, you know, and working on their own. So we don't want that. We want teachers, we want teachers to teach and students to learn, and they're not doing it just sitting in the lunchroom or cafeteria or wherever, you know, together, because that's just actually one big party probably, but in the long run, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli, you asked some of my questions as well. But I know I had spoken, I had spoken to some of our, like, our colleagues across the state, and they had used them, but they had switched over to another company, is what they had told me, a person who, a company who does K through 12. So I was interested in that. And then, when, the comment was that they pay what we want them to pay, so I'm not sure how that works.
What we set, Mrs. Jordan, to clarify, is we set the pay per hour for the substitute. Kelly pays them what we have determined to be the effective hourly wage. I want to stay away from salary, because they're not salaried employees. They're hourly casual employees, they're temporary, they're temporary in nature, but we get to determine, and you will continue to get to determine, what the hourly wage is based upon the slide that Mr. Dotick shared.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Plus the 27.5% over to what they pay, what we pay them as well.
That's what Kelly gets paid.
Right. Okay. So, and saying that then, so every week, we really have no idea what our weekly invoice will be from them, because of the fact, depending upon what substitutes come in and at what pay grade they come in on, every week it's going to be?
What type of subs they are, that's correct.
Correct. And it goes from 20, 22 to, I'm sorry, 17 to $29.
Correct.
So depending upon how many of each level they may bring in that particular week is what our, the invoice will be for that, so.
That's correct.
Am I right in that?
Keep in mind, that's what we do now.
Right.
We don't know who's going to fill what job. Of the 400 vacancies Mr. Dotick was talking about, and the 190 that are unfilled, we don't know who filled the 260 of them, 270 of them. We don't know whether those are people paid at $20 an hour or $17 an hour. We just know there's a range. Effectively, I know Ms. Desmore, being a conservative budgeter, probably would use the high end of a range on a daily absence to ensure there's enough dollars in the budget so that if everybody was the highest paid person, we would have enough money for the invoice that's submitted.
Okay, so then, when we're looking at the budget for the weekly?
Sorry, Dr. Desmore.
We are looking at it at the, at the highest range of the 29% plus the 27.5% markup. And then if they were to pay that $500 bonus, that's calculated into that as well?
Mm-hmm.
For the, for all that, okay. And I did also hear about the communication. So I think communication is really, really important, because I believe that multiple people who do sub here felt that they did not, they were not notified, or they did not hear about it, so they were not, they did not participate. I believe they will participate in it, but would they, then as soon as a contract, if a contract were to be signed, then they would no longer be contacting us, they would be contacting them?
Well, they'll still have a district email address, so they, I mean, that's not changing. And every guest teacher that has a district email address, which is all of them that are active, receive notice of the meeting and receive notice of what's happening, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Any questions? One more? Okay.
Actually, it's just regarding the hourly rate. I see that you have the, a very verified retired educator gets $27 an hour, and then you have someone for, at $22 an hour, if they just have a bachelor's degree or higher. But, I mean, what happens, I feel like we're kind of missing, I mean, how are you verifying what's retired? Like, what does that mean? Because some people maybe be, they might be doing something else.
Yep.
In a, you know, career.
So Kelly has experience with this. They will have to verify from the state retirement system that they come from, that they are certified and certified retired. So Kelly will be doing that work.
And I think I can add to that, that comment from Mr. Dotick. Because the compensation of those individuals is at the highest level, it, really, the onus comes to those individuals to provide, they have to provide evidence that they're qualified for that salary, unlike, you know, somebody who just will, they have to do the same with bachelor's degrees and others, but is, the higher you go, there's a requirement. Kelly is not going to pay you, neither would we, without the required documentation that proves that you are a retiree. So that becomes the onus of the candidate. The candidates that we transfer over to Kelly that we already know fit these categories, Kelly will accept those where they are.
That's right. One more. Go ahead.
All right, Ms. Jordan?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. My question is, so if they are a Kelly Service employee, and they come in, they are, the services that are being rendered in our schools are what the principals or what we are asking them to do, correct?
Absolutely.
Because I was looking at a, a contract, and it was stating that, well, they could not do this, or they could not do that pertaining to what Kelly's contract was. So I just want to make sure that whatever that looks like, if they're in our walls, they are doing?
That's right. No, they are, nothing changes with respect to the role of a guest teacher in our schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think, I think qualification, and I don't know, I would like an example of what you're talking about, so I'll give, I'll provide one. If a principal walks into a guest teacher's room and expects them to spend the day doing lunch duty, that, that is not what the person has been hired to do, and they do have the right to call Kelly Services at that point, like they would call us, and say, I'm here to, I'm supposed to be guest teaching, I've been asked to do lunch duty all day. I don't believe that happens in our schools. We're in such desperate need of our, but I want to be specific. If those types of events happen, yes, then there could be an avenue by which a teacher could say to a principal, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm here for, I'm here to teach U.S. history for the day. All right? But generally, that doesn't happen, but I'm not sure in the, in the, in the example you provided, that's the only example I can come up with. You know, there may be a possibility I hired on for U.S. history, and the U.S. history teacher got magically better and is there, but I have a math opening. As a principal, I would offer that a person an opportunity to stay, to make their money and teach math. They're likely to say yes.
Yep.
All right. I just had one question.
Go ahead, and then I'll come back.
What? Okay. I know we get some of our full-time teachers from our guest teachers. Is there any no-compete clause or anything like that with Kelly?
There is not, but there's a provision in the contract regarding that, which I can't recite for you just sitting here, but I can certainly provide.
I would expect there'd be some, something there. Give them a second to find it, please. Ms. Giavennelli, you want to go ahead and ask your question, while they?
Well, actually, that was one of them.
Yeah, there's a placement fee, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, that was what, so we're going to give, this is just me thinking, so we have how many guest teachers on our list right now that we, our pool, what's our pool?
Approximately 700 that are.
So, okay, 700, we're going to give them to Kelly, right? We're giving them all to Kelly?
Give them the opportunity.
Transition over, yes.
Okay, well, let's say they all, every, all 700 go, and then, we're, what's our expectations from Kelly? Are they going to, they're going to increase that? Because I mean, if we, I know your expectation is to go to 80, 80% plus, right, from 57 or whatever it is. So, and they should hire additional, we could have them, where I'm getting at is, they could have employees that come from different areas and location to fill our void, right?
Theoretically, sure, yes.
That was one of my, that was one of my questions, you know, they could be coming from other places, not just our 700 or whatever, so, right?
That's correct. They would, in order to get to an 80% fill rate, they're going to have to increase the number.
Right.
Ms. Ursley, I just, just a reminder again, the 700 figure is the active number of substitutes. We have lots of people who were originally in the substitute pool that aren't as active as they used to be. Can we have that number for the board? I know you usually have that.
That is, yes. As of June 30th, we had 1,819 guest teachers in our pool, but only 735 of those worked at least one day. So that's approximately 27% of our guest teacher pool who has, who's active, actively working in the system.
Well, and now that we're increasing the hourly rate, we may have more activity.
Well, and we're hopeful Kelly will start knocking on doors of those people that aren't working also.
Right. And that's, and that's the means that we, we don't have that support, and that's the need, part of the need for HR.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to keep talking that. Okay, thank you.
All right. I want to thank you for your presentation. Great job answering, I think, everybody's questions.
Thank you, board.
Unless Ms. Giavennelli has another one.
No. I think, I tried to hit everything.
Very good. Thanks again. The last workshop item on the agenda is the review of our regular agenda for our November 7th board meeting. So, Dr. Bernier?
Mr. Chairman.[1706.33]
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, thank you very much for the opportunity. There were several questions submitted. I think we've covered a number of them. I will certainly get to the second item and ask the member who, if we've answered the majority of those questions or if there's anything they still need. The first item was under Academic Service H1 approval of the AARP ESER III Amendment Grant. It was a mention that the requested information regarding ESER funds, I do not recall that my questions were answered. We've been scheduling the ESER presentation for November 7th. It is still on tap to be here. It will go over the entire ESER process, including the number of employees we have, the number of vacancies we have, the number of employees that have been informed that they're in a grant-funded position. We will continue to do that. But I think it's important for the board to understand what this amendment is. This amendment is meant to reduce initiatives that do not require as much or if any funding. For example, we have enough funding for the extended day in our schools, we have enough funding for our summer school costs, supplemental pay, but we've done some things and we're asking for additional dollars in amendment to the dollars that we're entitled to, to help with class coverage pay, which we were just discussing. We're not sure these amendments will be approved by the state, but we're going to ask. The summer professional development program, instructional materials. One thing that I've been remiss in not telling you more about is the niggatory gifted screening. We are now officially screening every second grader for gifted, which is the primary year where they're identified for gifted programs beginning in third grade, and not just based upon a recommendation of a staff member, we're actually doing the hard testing work. And we do believe we'll see an increase in the diversity of our gifted population. We did the Scholastic Libraries for elementary classrooms. We also used, we are also planning to use some of this money for our Public Consulting Group LLC and the Latinger Center for the Science of Reading and Professional Development, which you're also aware of as well. So there are, I'm more than happy to provide the number of intervention teachers, elementary teachers, deans, high school teachers. We can put this in the general update in terms of how many new positions were created with the funds, how many positions are fully funded. I can tell you that of the current funded ESER positions, 241 are 100% funded and 26 positions are funded at 50%, I'm sorry, at 50% or less. In terms of how many existing positions transferred from operations dollars to ESER funds is the way I interpreted the question. The Grants Department is going to provide some extra time. The information will be provided in the board update because they want to make sure that that's researched properly. Breakdown of numbers, again, of the current 267 total ESER-funded positions, 229 are school-based positions, 89 are at the elementary, 14 at K-8, 74 at middle, 49 at high school, and three at special centers, and 38 are district positions. Again, as we talk about existing positions in the previous question, we would need additional time, but they will submit it through the weekly. The exact plan for these positions as well after the ESER. The plans for ESER-funded positions are still in development, have not yet been completely finalized. The district is certainly aware that the funding of these positions will end in June of 2023, and viable options are all being explored. At this time, HR has already notified all of the individuals via letter, informing them that their position is grant-funded. The district will use the budget process to make informed decisions regarding these positions. Currently, we still have 240 vacant instructional positions. That's based upon data from 10/27. So we know that we have enough positions with which to absorb these individuals in additional certification areas should they choose. So the difficult part will be in the budgetary process moving forward, certainly looking at the strategic plan, who these people are, what they do, how they align to the strategic plan goals, will make the hard decision of whether they continue to be funded from another form of source, or whether they're asked to seek back an instructional or other position that would be available, that would meet their skill set.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Actually, like I told you yesterday afternoon, this could have waited till November 7th, but because ESER, I, you know, was keeping it in the forefront of my head here, and so thank you for those answers. I'm good. I can't wait to November 7th, so, I mean, I can, but. And then you could also, my, my questions are answered regarding the contract, regarding the Kelly contract, so you could skip those questions.
And we will continue, I think it's important for the board to know, we will continue to do a lot of communication. We did a lot prior to this point. We, you know, we will see who turns out on November 7th. We've talked about that in one-on-ones as well. And I, I've not seen a volume of emails. If, if I'm missing something offline or away from the dais singularly one-on-one, if I'm missing a volume of emails coming from our substitute teachers, I would, I would like to have that conversation with the individuals who are receiving them because you're all really good about passing those along, and I appreciate that. The other questions were regarding the approval for the supervisor technical, schedule and salary schedule, the TALC bargaining agreement and the SpALC bargaining agreement. There's, so what was the actual percentage we offered? We were very specific. We offered 8%. The dollars that we offered represented an 8% pay raise for every employee. The unions, however, did it a little differently. So I think that's important to know that TALC and SpALC are, are three-year deals for their language with reopeners for compensation and reopeners for our instructional minutes with our TALC people. Benefits of the other agencies and parties for Schedule N and for the admin schedule, those are not collective bargaining agreements. So that process is a little different. So that's why there's a longer agreement with TALC and SpALC over a number of years because we're trying to agree to more language with reopeners over the issues that you wanted us to reopen over. The other piece to that is, the question was regarding when will it go into effect? Our plan, if we can get all these things ratified and get them to the board with the ratification votes, because remember, they can't vote electronically any longer, they have to vote. So that started today. Both unions will finish up before the end of the week. We will get those ratified documents attached to the agenda, and our whole, and our plan, not a hope, our plan is to have the December 15 paycheck be impacted by the new salary and any retroactive pay that's due to those individuals. 8% overall for all employees. TALC and SpALC are a little different than Schedule N and admin because they're collective bargaining agreements. That's why a longer term. And the plan is for an opportunity to have a happier Christmas based upon a paycheck arriving on or about December 15.
Thank you so much. Just real quick, so the board knows, I actually had someone that's kind of in the system thought they were getting 11% raise. So that caused me to be a little alarmed because I didn't know how that communication was going, you know, getting around. So that's why I wanted him to clear that.
So let me be, let me be clear. The TALC agreement does adjust the percentage for an employee based upon where they would enter into a system based upon years of experience. I have to be very careful with my words. That process, because we have new starting salaries for people at the upper echelons, we had to, we are adjusting through the agreement, if ratified, that those individuals will actually get more than 8%. But there are some people at the beginning of the salary schedule because the governors and the other support that they've received to raise teaching salary and your direction to get it to $50,000 or more, there will be lower percentages applied, and that is currently under ratification with the union under their vote. So yes, there are some people who may get more than that 8% based upon where they fit within the salary schedule. But that is TALC only.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? That's good, seeing none, we'll go to the Good of the Order. Ms. Langford Fleming, would you want to go first on this?
I don't have anything for Good of the Order today.
All right. Ms. Morgan?
And I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
The only thing I, I just want to bring up is that I've been having many, many parents speak on the aftercare program because it says $10 a day or $50 a week. And there are some of the schools that offer programs after school, their child cannot participate because otherwise they'd have to pay the $50 because they're only there for the one day. So that the child is not be, being given that opportunity to participate. And I was talking to some of the different aftercares and asking them, because my, my great kids go there, if that would hurt them if we were to do that, and where to, you know, if they were to add those extra people, it would actually help them. But I just think that I promised that I would bring that forward, and so I'm just bringing that up for conversation and because I was asked to do so.
Ms. Jordan, I appreciate it. You and I have had an offline conversation around the same thing. I will ask the, as I told you, I will ask the elementary executive directors to circle back with their committee of principals. This was a joint decision made in a year one of operation, trying to ensure that we utilized our principles in the development of this so that we would have buy-in from one school to another. So I will ask the executive directors to follow up with their committee and, and discuss this issue more at length. There may be an opportunity somewhere in the calendar year for us to make an adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Trecchett?
Just in response, Mr. Chair, to the email you sent out about internal audit questions, I had already sent my questions to RSM when you sent me that email, and I'm not allowed to reply via email, so I'm replying in public. I had already sent those questions to RSM, they have already responded to me. I've also had a conversation with Dr. Bernier. I feel like my questions have been answered, so I just wanted to be transparent, let you all know that I sent the questions to the wrong person, but they get answered. Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Thank you. I don't have much, but I, I thought that I would read what Ms. Somrento had up on her PowerPoint, which I really liked it and I wrote it down. "We cannot become what we want to be remaining what we are." Oh, by, I'm sorry, let me re-read that. "We cannot become what we want by remaining what we are," by May Dupree. I thought that was really kind of, I loved what, that she wrote that, and I meant to say something to her, and I just, I will be chewing on that because I think it's important that changes. Sometimes, it's always good in a matter, regardless, and so moving forward is always good. So, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. I have none for this meeting. Ms. Dupay?
None, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Dr. Bernier?
Just because of timing and some events, and I know this don't all fit in Good of the Order, but first and foremost, thank you. Thank you for the hard work of really another deep, very intense work session. There was a lot here again today. The staff has been working really hard on these presentations. A reminder to you, you should have received notification of the cancellation of the November 28th work session because it's just not heavily loaded, and I know members of the board have all their obligations on that day related to their professional obligations. I'd like to remind people who maybe still be listening of the town hall this evening out at Oakhamic Middle School. If you've not had enough of the school board and the superintendent by this point, you can come see us tonight at a matinee at Oakhamic beginning at 5:30. Since we have so much excitement around our world, just for the board members, I talked with Mr. LaRosa today. As you know, we're crawling to the end of our high school football season. Jaws versus Claws will be a big game this weekend. I'm looking forward to seeing there, and Mr. Ammobil was very nice to make sure I was invited. But the playoff schedule will be announced sometime on Sunday, and Mr. LaRosa will be communicating with you. And I'm still on top of our young lady to ensure we all get the girls' flag football schedule when it arrives. The other big thing is the admin schedule is not currently on the agenda. So we've had this all conversation about 8%, and yes, the admin number represents an 8% to all administrators. The assistant principals and principals brought up some concerns prior to us leaving for Tallahassee. I met with them, we had a deep discussion. I meet with them again on Friday. So after Friday, I'll be able to bring my recommendation, and I spoke to you in one-on-ones. I'll bring, be bringing the admin schedule as a good cause item. So I want the admins to know that they've not been forgotten if they're looking at the agenda and they wonder where they are. That's the reason why we need to have one more meeting, and I believe it to be at least, it would be disingenuous to post something and not have a conversation with our admins who asked me to speak to them. And finally, this coming Saturday is the marching band music performance assessment. This may not be a crowd draw, but if you would like to see someone who's never conducted a band in his entire life, I would be asked to conduct the National Anthem as this, as this performance assessment begins. So if that's not attractive enough, the bands should be. So it'd be really exciting to see if you can come out on, on Saturday. The plan is for that to begin around 1:00 PM at Fort Myers. Exciting, exciting opportunity.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
When you're talking about athletics, I do, I do have to mention a four-letter word here, golf. Okay? Steril High, looks like they qualified for the state championships in both the boys and the girls. So I'll give them a little shout-out there. Okay, having no other business coming for this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 3:40 PM.